I'm going to call this meeting Gloucester School Committee to order. I'll remind everybody that the mission of Gloucester Public Schools is for all students to be successful, engaged, lifelong learners. This meeting is recorded by video and audio in accordance with the state open meeting law, consistent with the governor's orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and banning gatherings of more than 25 people. This meeting will be conducted by remote participation. If you're calling in on a phone, you can press star nine to request to speak. If you're watching on a computer or a device, there is a raise the hand button that you can tap or press to request to speak. Please use either of these options during oral communications to be recognized to speak. And Maria, we want to have a roll call for presence to see who's present.
Chairman Pope.
Here.
Ms. Prince.
Here.
Mayor Taken.
Here.
Ms. Watson.
Here.
Ms. Weason.
Here.
Kathy Clancy.
Here.
And Mr. Favaza.
Here.
This is a special meeting. This is not a regular meeting. And our process and policy is that we take oral communications on regular meetings. Now, that being said, it's on the agenda. So is it the will of the committee that we take oral communications this evening or that we proceed without them? I'm seeing a couple of thumbs up and the consent of the committee has to be unanimous. So we will proceed. We'll wave the salute to the flag because I don't have my flag here tonight. And we will proceed with oral communications. But that being said, I would like to just state that on next Tuesday at 10 o'clock, we will be having another special school committee meeting where we will have the DPW director as well as the specialists that have been working in the school to check on air quality and making recommendations to actions that we should take simultaneously. The city is in the process of trying to bond, and correct me if I'm wrong, so Fafia, but $700,000 to do upgrades and repairs to the air handling systems in the schools.
Yes, that's what we've got so far. Could be more, but right now that's what we're looking at.
Okay, so the, I know there are concerns about the buildings, but I just have to impress upon the community that we are aware of them and that we are taking, the city and DPW are taking the actions that they are being advised to take as well as, and as I said, we'll get a full report on this next Tuesday morning at 10 o'clock. So that being said, I'm going to open it up for oral communications. Okay, we'll give it another minute, but I don't see anybody. Our regulars are here. Cynthia. Go ahead, Cynthia.
Hello, thank you Cynthia Mahaski over at Wall Street. I love that I can see all your faces and you can't see mine because I'm just like, oh, I, yeah. Anyhow, I just wanted to say thank you again. I know the air quality report is coming out. Really, the biggest concern has been the three-foot distance that, I know Desi recommended it. Desi is not a public health department. They're just the education department. And I just think the three-foot distance between desks, especially at the high school, is problematic. Believe me, I would much rather be in school. I would rather be in the building and I want to see my students and I want to see my colleagues. And there's not, I don't think there's one teacher who doesn't want that. It's just a matter of reassurance of safety. That's it. And you all know that too. But it's just always good to remind everybody. So thank you. And I love that I'm a regular. I guess, I guess, you know, I'm hoping to get back to the bars for that one. I don't want to be a regular at a school committee member. That's kind of pathetic. All right, thank you.
Claire Hopper. Hello.
Thank you for having this meeting. I really appreciate it. I was wondering about the kids with 504 plans, IEPs, the kids with the learning disabilities. Are they going to be able to go learn in person? Do students are having to stay at home? Because my son has ADHD. He doesn't do so well with remote learning.
Okay.
We can get an update during my report on that.
Yeah, we will, we will get an update on things tonight, which it may be included, but somebody will, will be in touch with you to give you more information. Okay?
Okay.
Seeing no more oral communications, I'm going to close oral communications. And we will proceed to our update on the school reopening and reentry plan. And I'm going to hand it over to Superintendent Loomis.
Thank you, Jonathan. Pull up my screen here, one second. One second here.
Oh. Can we just hold on a minute, Ben? Kathy, Melissa has something she'd like to say.
Yes, absolutely, no shame.
Thank you. I just wanted to take this opportunity to apologize for to all the families in our community and elsewhere impacted by autism and to other families as well. A couple of meetings ago, I was in a conversation advocating for a kid at the high school to get access to in-class learning. I made a comment about autistic kids that is inappropriate. And it is my ignorance that caused me to say it. And to make matters even worse, when I was first brought aware that the comment was made, I denied it because I didn't have any recollection of saying it. And a copy of the video was actually sent to me and it was then that I realized I did say what I didn't think that I said. But I do owe everyone an apology for using the word the way that I did. Clearly, I do not have the awareness of autism that I thought I did and have some training to do and some learning to do about it. But it was very ignorant and I apologize to any families and to anyone out there if I hurt their feelings or made them feel inappropriate. Anyone who knows me knows that I would never intentionally do that and that I always advocate for kids with any types of needs. But it was my choice of bad words and very insensitive and I just apologize and promise to do better going forward and hope a comment like that would never come out of my mouth again because I would never intend to offend anybody or any family involving any needs for their child. So thank you for that opportunity and I hope people will accept my apology.
Thank you, Melissa. Okay, Ben, you're on.
Okay, thank you. Let me get to go in here. Okay. Jonathan, did you see the presentation? Okay, great.
Yes, yes.
Great. So we'll give you an update on a few areas we're making progress on. Everything is a work in progress and you'll see some of that tonight. We're going to focus a little bit more on K to five tonight because we spent last week on, we're working through some key matters at, at the high school. So just to remind folks, in case you're tuning in, our primary objective remains to safe return of as many students as possible to in-person school settings to maximize learning. I address our students' full needs and support community and family needs. Our understanding is that our schools serve the whole entire community in many, many ways. These are our ongoing principles for planning, that the academic, social, emotional, mental health needs of our students are best served when they're in our schools with their teachers and staff. Our decisions need to be based on facts and science and data, in particular that we need to make decisions based on what's happening in Gloucester and our surrounding communities locally and not as what's happening in other states or on the news. We'll strengthen remote learning, but nothing can fully replace in-person instruction with our teachers. The health and safety and education of Gloucester's children and the health and safety of our families are definitely our top priority. Now, talk a little bit more about minimizing risk, but also the notion of looking at a broad view of risk. We continue to base our work and our guidance on the guidance that's been set forth by the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, who are working with many local and state public health officials and experts, including the American Academy of Pediatricians. And they are, just like the many other state departments, working with health experts in terms of helping form their guidance. And that's been very helpful along the way for all of us. In terms of community health update, again, we continue to base our decisions primarily on local health, health data and the status of COVID in our, in our neighborhood, I mean, in our community in Gloucester and the area. So at this point, on September 2nd, there are only three active cases in Gloucester, which is fantastic. I mean, that's, that's something the community should be very, very proud of in terms of how we're taking care of ourselves and each other. The statewide positivity rate for COVID is the lowest it has been. We are, we are, and that's partly because, well, I won't get into testing because I'm not an expert on these. I'm just sort of relaying data and information to you. Last week, we were rated green on the state map in terms that has, you know, gray now, green, yellow, and red. Gray and green being the most, I guess, the healthiest or the safest places in terms of spread. We're expecting the new data for this week to come out at any moment. Last week was released in the middle of our meeting. It may, that may happen again as well. So again, community transmission is the key metric for all of us and all that goes into that. One other metric that I, that I communicated with Karen Carroll, our Department of Health Director about today is the, is the, is our wastewater. And that continues to be consistent with very, very low transmission and I know, and is supporting the fact that we only have, you know, three cases at this point. Excuse me. So again, community transmission remains very, very low in Gloucester, which is fantastic. There was concern as the summer went along, it would increase, but Gloucester's really been doing a great job. And it's not only, it's not, hasn't increased, it's decreased since a couple of weeks ago. So that's fantastic news. This was last week's, sorry, two weeks ago, just to see how things change week to week. We have, and then last week, you can see they changed white to gray. We became green, but it should be pointed out, a couple of things that the state wants us to point out and really Department of Health here in Gloucester wants us to point out that, you know, change of one or two cases locally can move you from, say, green to gray or back again. And also, the Department of Education is telling us very clearly not to sort of have knee-jerk reactions based on this data, you know, but to look at a couple of weeks at least, if not three weeks, in making adjustments because these can't change. But we are, continue to be in great shape. Green from the State Department of Education's point of view means folks should be in-person learning or extending circumstances in hybrid learning, which is really sort of, that's just, just how we're, we're, what we're hoping for here, or aiming for, I should say. At the same time, I mentioned the balance of your risk. So the only risk in our, you know, they're not, the only, COVID isn't the only risk in our community, of course. There's loss of learning as a potential. There's a social, emotional impact of, of being distant from, from friends and peers and being removed from them. There is a concern about safety in families, a few food insecurity, the challenge of parental employment if they don't have their kids in school, if they don't have access to good childcare, and also a lack of essential services for many, many students, including those in our own community here. So just a reminder of folks, just to sort of put what we're trying to do in relation to the rest of the Commonwealth. So I showed you this last week, but just to help folks who maybe didn't tune in last week, of the 376 charter school, I mean, school districts, charter schools, regional school districts, 248 of those are using the hybrid model. So the majority, really about two-thirds of school communities are using a hybrid model as we're approaching it as well, whether that's at our elementary preschool or, sorry, elementary, middle school and also the high school, which is starting remote, as you know, but aiming to go to hybrid on October 13th. Our preschool obviously is in, is in, in person, but with reduced enrollment to make, make it more possible to abide by the health and safety rules. So I'm not going to go through all the health and safety precautions that we're doing because I did it very detailed way last week and will continue to get communication out to families as we go, but just want to highlight a few of them because they work together. So face and mask coverings, you're going to be working on a policy tonight about facing mask coverings. These are required for all staff and students, for all staff, period, all staff, but for students grade two to 12. And we'll highly encourage our students pre-K to first grade to have mask coverings if they can. Mandatory for all students on buses and folks are working through how to do mask breaks throughout the day and that's when students need to be six feet apart. Maintaining physical distance, we'll talk more about that today. Certainly aiming for a physical distance of six feet, but do want to know, everyone to know that we will abide by the, our state guidance on maintaining three feet minimum. And that's okay when combined with these other safety measures, including, as we have here, hand hygiene. We've now installed, I think, close to 600 hand sanitizing stations in our classrooms and hallways and common areas. Those are filled weekly. And, and then of course, hand washing needs to be a regular occurrence as well. We are also in the process of putting up signage in our schools, both directional signage, but also hygiene signage and safety signage as well. And those will be all in place by the time students start. That's another area that's a work in progress. It is great we have these 10 days now for folks to, to do a lot of preparation and continue to make progress. Just a reminder again, we have on, on hand already, because we ordered it early, plenty of personal protective equipment and 95 masks for staff, disposal mask for staff, for students, face shields for all staff, which they can choose to wear if they want to, safety goggles, gloves, isolation gowns, all there, ready to be used and distributed to our, distribute to our schools. Pardon me. Our medical waiting rooms are in place or being set up, I should say, in all schools. That's in case students come down with any symptoms, during or report any symptoms and they can be there with a nurse, distance from other students. So as I mentioned, there are quite a bit of, you know, things we're working on and that's part of these 10 days we have between August 31st and September 15th. And in terms of when and where mask breaks happen, practicing drop off and pickup, that sort of thing, you know, arrival to the day, I'll show you tonight some, you know, how we're working on the final arrangement, arrangement of desks and tables in classrooms, lunch locations for those students staying the full day. And I'll also share, you know, mother, other pieces here, signage being put up, obviously. And we're working on other areas, which I'll continue to describe as we go along tonight. Another areas of real importance is how we respond to COVID cases in schools. I won't go too far into this because I mentioned it last week as well, but a really, really important piece for our staff, but also our families to understand is how we'll have specific protocols based on Desi guidance for all these areas. So that's exposure or positive tests or students have symptoms that's in school, on the bus, at home, staff and students. We'll also have protocols for if there are multiple cases in, in a school or across a district and how we move from, you know, one phase to the next. So, and these are areas we have to work closely with the Department of Health. We are working closely with the Department of Health. We will be providing to staff and families a checklist of symptom, easy to use and read checklist of symptoms to self-monitor for every day. Protocols, easy to understand protocols, like I mentioned on the previous page, but ones that are easy to understand for students, staff, and families, so they'll know what to do in case of any situations and who to contact and whether to quarantine or not, whether, whether to get a test. So we'll make sure those are provided to them in the coming week. And also Karen Carroll from the Gloucester Department of Health has created a nice short video to help people understand what happens and how the Department of Health follows up on the positive tests and how they do contact tracing. So we'll share that with, with everyone in the coming week as well, as we put together these three pieces. And it's all about educating folks and helping them understand that things are safe, they will be safe, and what we need from them and what they can expect from us. So I can pause there if there are any questions. I see Ms. Prince has her hand up.
Listen.
Thank you. I want to do two things. I want to recognize Principal Matt Fusco right now.
Oh, you went, you went on mute, Melissa.
Somebody muted me. So I want to recognize Principal Matt Fusco for his awesome video that was geared towards kids about wearing masks and what you expect going into school. I thought that was a really great way to introduce the school year as kids at home anticipate entering the building. And I'm just wondering if there are other videos planned to reach kids before the first day of school from other principals, just to show their expectations and to show the face of principals and maybe teachers before they even get to school. I was just wondering if that was the plan. And if you don't have the answer tonight, that's fine. But I just thought it was such a great idea.
Sure. No, folks are working on that. I've also seen one from East Gloucester, Principal Amy Pascarello. The Arcade, I asked Arcade of Five principals to be on the call tonight. And so they are welcome to chime in if you like and if you have any plans right now or, I think we have one from Plum Cove as well.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Prince, for the nice compliment. We have plans at Veterans. We just filmed our arrival and dismissal video today, trying to keep it fun. And I know the other principals have been doing videos as well. So that's part of all five of our plans moving forward.
Great, great. Thank you, Ben. Okay, I'll keep moving then. Oh, Jonathan, I see Ms. Weason has a.
Go ahead, Laura.
Thank you. Ben, just a quick question. How do we get the information on the wastewater testing? I've sort of been trying to find out how we, the school committee, are able to access this information and I haven't gotten an answer on that yet.
I just talked to Karen Carroll myself, but she can't talk to everybody. I don't know. I will find out how the public can. I feel like I saw an update on the, on the city website today, but well, I'll find out.
Okay. Is that a weekly, is that a weekly test?
I don't, I don't know. I don't want to misspeak.
Okay, I just want a little. Okay, thank you. That's it.
We can, we can ask Mike Hill next week. He might know, unless the Fafia knows.
I'm also expecting, I'm asking Karen Carroll to meet with us next, to come on next, next Wednesday's school community meeting as well. I don't, I haven't gotten confirmation on that, so I don't want to, I hope I didn't just put her in a corner there, but I'm, but we'll find out. Let me just make a quick note of that.
Thanks, Ben.
Okay, great. Okay, so I'm moving on. So we'll give you a variety of updates here. School, just, these are just what I'm going to talk about. So our staff started working on our buildings on Monday, which was a great day and it continued to be a great week. I've been able to get to all schools at the, I think at this point, pretty sure. So folks were setting up their, setting up their, spending time doing a lot of things. And I'd love to have the K to five principals chime in with some specifics, if you like, in a moment. Folks are setting up their classrooms, they're doing professional development on safety measures, which are COVID-related, but also universal precautions. I was, I think I was volunteered, but somehow I was the patient for the EpiPen training at Beeman this morning. So it didn't hurt, well, the nurse was very strong in, in, you know, impaling my thigh, but there was no needle. So, but that went over pretty well. I didn't faint or anything like that. So a lot of training on professional development on safety, professional development on remote learning platforms and teaching remotely. There's team meeting time, obviously, they're hearing from the superintendent. So I've addressed all the schools at this point, except for, just give them a welcome address, which I can share, share with the school committee. And we'll finish up with the schools this week, all of them, done most of them at this point, just missing a couple, I think. And so that's been going pretty well. Any of the principals want to chime in in terms of just a couple of examples of what's going on in your school? Sorry, this is sort of on the, on the spot and put them on the spot.
Hi, Ben, it's Jody.
Hi, Jody.
So at Beeman, as Ben says, we've been working on getting classrooms set up. We've had to move a lot of spaces to create some additional breakout spaces that will be options as we're able to spread out further once students come in. Staff has been participating in quite a bit of training. I have paraprofessionals hanging all kinds of signage everywhere to direct children, to remind them to wear their masks, wash their hands, you know, which way to walk in the hallway, all that good stuff. So there's lots going on to get, get us ready to begin the school year with students.
Great, great. And some of that's happening remotely. So like, for example, yesterday was voting day. So folks at the high school, a lot of folks were participating remotely. So that's been an option for folks at times. People are, you know, meeting in their rooms, sometimes they're meeting, also meeting remotely in the schools as well. There've been some challenges just on bandwidth and part of that is primarily because you have all staff at, at one time streaming all videos of all other staff in all of their rooms. So that's, that's, takes a lot of bandwidth and then maybe happening across the district, but we're, we're understanding how to do that better. That's a, that's a load on our system that typically wouldn't be happening, even if we're in remote. But it's just something that, you know, one of the challenges we're working through, like, like there always are when we start school. The other thing I want to just really call out, the DPW staff, our custodians, every building I've been in, they are moving things, they are waxing things, they are cleaning things, they are, you know, just right there, just, you know, helping out, serving, supporting. And so our custodians are doing a fantastic job. Our nurses who are really, at this point, very highly trained because so many, I think almost all of them have been working with the Department of Health all summer, but they're, you know, real go-to people at this point in terms of helping people understand about safety, but also just helping assure them about how things will work. So those two groups of folks are just doing great, great work. I should also just obviously call out the principals too for the work they've done to get things to where they are. So a lot of folks pulling together this week and it's just fantastic. You know, there's energy in the buildings for the first time in a long time. There's, you know, collaboration, there's legality, of course, and it's just great to see folks working in the buildings and, and getting to it. So, and I think folks are pretty pleased with, with being able to do that. So we're working on our remote learning academy development. A lot of attention this week has been on the K to fives as we're working with them on staffing the remote. We've assigned teachers to, to, so the core academic teachers for our six, sorry, K to five remote learning. We're also, been in schools and did, and the district office have been reaching out to high-needs families who've requested remote and want to check with them and double-check with them to see if they prefer hybrid. And so some families are shifting out of remote into hybrid, especially for students who have more significant needs. The 20% of K five families, as I announced last week, have opted for remote. It is helping reduce our, reduce our in-person class sizes, which I'll talk about in a little bit. And just a reminder that 21% of the six to eight families have opted for remote. We are also at the same time starting to move forward on staffing for remote at, at the middle school. I've been talking to Lynn Bede. I've been talking to Lynn Beatty about that. And then also, but, and then, and then next we'll be, you know, working, continue to work with. Principal Cook at the high school as he and his team sort of develops that. They have a little, little lead time here. In terms of the remote academy, because they will all be starting, you know, full remote with their regular schedules. So that's, give us a little bit of leeway there, but still have to work quickly on all of that. One second here.
Ben, can I ask a quick question?
Yeah, yes, of course.
In relation to the remote academy, what kind of outreach is planned for families, just to sort of get them. On board with sort of what the expectations are going to be and. You know, what the schedule will look like now that sort of staffing is figured out, what kind of outreach?
Couple of things. I want to have Greg Bach give us, give you an update, a little more update on how we're approaching the remote academy with the K to fives. And he can also, I believe a communication went out yesterday. Telling, telling families just what to expect in the coming week or so. So Greg, if you could give us an update on. How you're building the team and how, and sort of the team approach at K to five for the remote learning academy. And then also if you talk about communication to families, that'd be great.
Sure, I'd be happy to. They, I've been working with a really great group of K to five teachers over the last few days. They were really just selected over the weekend. Final selections were made over the weekend. So we've met on Monday, we met again today. And they have been working overtime already, just in the last couple of days. Working together to secure the kind of resources that are. Necessary. I just want people to keep in mind, we're looking at currently about 240 students, which means. Essentially the creation of a school that is larger than three of our elementary schools. And this is, this is not something that is undertaken lightly. So these, the teachers have been. Already assembling the kinds of materials that we will want to send home. We'll be planning district. Distribution days, pick up at the central office. We are still working on staffing, so that is why I did send out a confirmation email. To all families, letting them know that they're. They, they had registered their student and that they were confirmed for remote academy, but to. Reach out and respond to me if their plans had changed. I have had a few responses. And been emailing back and forth with a variety of questions as well. I've also told them to look forward to further information coming very soon. We do need to finish up putting together the teams Ben just mentioned. That we have, you know, a large number of students and it's really important that we build out a team for each grade level and that would include. A special educator, English language learner support. Hopefully a paraprofessional to be able to work, providing some interventions. We are looking into. Specialist teacher as well, so that, and we've also are pairing up each. Each grade level teacher with a reading coach and math coaches are covering several, working with all of them. So we're in the process right now of building out that team at each grade level. And our goal, we'll be meeting regularly. Our goal is to. Begin getting out more detailed information to parents at the beginning of next week with revised schedule. I have shared the primary, the remote learning schedule that we're working off of. But we will make a few adjustments to that. We will be planning a webinar for all parents to attend. To get an idea of what's coming up and expectations. Introducing the teachers and the teams at each of the grade levels. And then really handing some of those ongoing communications over to those teachers. But I will probably start with a, an overall webinar for all parents, certainly next week. So there's, there's a lot to do in a short amount of time. But again, it's a really terrific, highly competent, motivated group of teachers who want to do the best. For the students in the remote academy. So we'll, we feel confident that. We'll be up and running for the 16th and that we'll have good communication out well before that.
Greg, can I ask you one question?
Yeah.
What's the distribution by grade? Is it, you know, how, how evenly, you know, the people have chosen for remote learning? How evenly distributed is it by grade?
It's almost perfect, evenly distributed K through five. Grade five has a few more, but it's, you know, even on the graphs, it looks like a perfect pie chart.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? I can't see anybody, so.
Samantha, I think, has a question.
Will there be any sort of relationship building planned?
Absolutely. That was, that's the very first thing that the teachers talked about. You know, they, if there were any concerns in anybody's mind that. Students coming from five schools together in a, in a grade level. Would be anyway, any lesser than what's happening typically happens in a school. The teacher's very first thing they said was, you know, these are going to be our kids and we need to build relationships and they need to know that we're there for them. So it's very much on their minds. I think it's impossible not to have a teacher who goes immediately to thinking about that. So it's top of their list. I know they've already been planning activities.
Thank you, Greg, for that update.
Ben, you're muted.
Yeah, you, go ahead, Ben. You're muted, though.
Getting there, thank you. So just a, you know, staffing update. Which ties in the remote academy to some degree because the staff, as Greg is saying, we're working on the remote academy for K to five. That's, that's getting complete. Using a team approach there. We've had a minimal number of leaves requested at this point from staff. We obviously need to know those as soon as possible. And our deadline yesterday, which we asked people to meet. Folks can request a leave at any time, but we are really urging folks to. Let us know because that really impacts our staffing, our student assignments. Our budget, all those things. High school continues to work on staffing, supporting its remote model. That is, continues to be complicated. It was complicated last week when we came to you. It's complicated this week. And then also working through staffing approach for special education and high-needs learners. That might be a good, this might be a good moment. Patty Wegman, just to. Just to give, just to really respond to the community members' question from open communications around. How we're supporting special education students and. And bring them in during the school day. Patty, if you can give us an update. Let's answer that question.
Sure, Ben. Can you be more specific as far as the question, are you speaking specifically to remote learners or in?
Oh, no, thank you. No, I'm, really, I guess both. I'm just wanting you to respond to the. Woman's question who asked during your communication, concerned about will her student have the, you know, option to participate in, in person? And so you can talk about how we're prioritizing high-needs learners, including special education learners to be in person. And, and, you know, so just really sort of focus on that. Sort of more of as a, as a, as a general question.
Sure. So it depends on whether or not the student is a high-needs learner. I think we've done a good job. Planning for our high-needs students. Those are students that are in sub-separate programs or have 75% or more services. Through special education. We've planned for them to be in school almost every day, all day. Depending on the model between the elementary and the middle school. As far as remote learners, we are. Just really coming down to the wire with some final plans as far as supporting our, our learners who have chosen remote learning and have. You know, really figured out the details regarding who needs a special educator to provide. You know, reading, writing and mask support remotely. Our related service providers will be providing remote services for those children who have chosen remote learning. So. As far as 504s, 504s are students who require accommodations through general education. So those accommodations through the remote learning process will have to be provided. Through the educator that's providing the remote learning or in-person learning as well.
Okay. And just Patty, for those folks, when you say related service providers, can you just be more specific about what that means in terms of the support students receive?
Sure. Related service providers are occupational therapists, our physical therapists, speech-language pathologists. Our teacher of the deaf and hard of hearing and our board-certified behavior analysts as well.
Great, thank you. Great. Just want to take the opportunity to respond to the community members' question. I think, Jonathan, I think Mr. Texera has a.
Go ahead, Melissa.
Thank you. Just more for Patty, if I may. So I've been hearing some buzz in the community about the topic of. Who is considered high-needs and who isn't. And I tried very carefully in this conversation because this is why I've gotten trouble before. So. I understand that those that qualify under the state definition of high-needs are getting active. But there are a lot of kids in our district that have needs that may not fit the definition of the state high-needs. Language, but that. Remote learning simply is not working for them. And some of them are on the 504. And I'm just wondering if we're doing anything outside of what we're mandated to, to get these families help. Because there's a lot of families out there that are frustrated that their child doesn't qualify necessarily to come in. When other high-needs kids are coming in. So it seems to me we're sticking to a state definition. And not helping the huge amount of kids that need extra help. So how, is there anything we can do about that? I mean, I know you just said you're having people do outreach, but. For the kids that remote is not learning for, and I think I'm talking more at the high school right now where that first month is remote. How can we get them extra help? When remote doesn't work for their families, for their children?
So Melissa, I think. Early on, the mental health working group really started looking at how are we monitoring those kids that are accessing remote learning? And really putting into place for our principals procedures to determine who's not accessing remote learning. And pulling together teams of, of, of staff to look at. How can we reach out to those families? What do they need? Do they need a remote learning academy? Do, you know, what is it that the family needs to. Reach out to these families and to engage them. So I think early on, we've got a plan in place to make sure that we are monitoring. Who is accessing remote learning and what we need to do to make sure that we're meeting their needs. And, you know, we'll continue to monitor those, those families. And if we have to pull them in. We certainly will be doing that outreach to figure out how to make that work.
So when you say pull them in, what does that mean? Do you mean pull them in for a conversation? Or is it possibly an ability to pull kids into the school that may not necessarily have met the definition of high-needs?
But I think those are individual conversations, Melissa, that have to take place. And certainly. You know, again, at the high school and middle school level, like you said, some of those older kids are the ones that are. More difficult to engage. And like I said, when I say pull them in, yes, pull them in for the conversation and figure out a plan moving forward.
Okay, I think, I just think it's something we really need to watch, just so that we don't lose those kids at the beginning of the year.
Samantha has a question.
Well, I was just wondering if, Ben, at some point, we could maybe get. Give the whole committee an update on what's happening with the stakeholders group, because I do think some of the work there is relevant to Melissa's question. You know, not specific to getting kids into the classroom more, but, you know, finding space for students who. Who might not be able to do remote learning at home on those remote learning days. There's a lot of really good work coming out of that group, so I think it would be helpful for the whole committee to get an update at some point.
You, yeah, you're absolutely right. It's hard to keep, yeah, it's a great reminder, honestly, because I hadn't, hadn't thought about that. And, you know, we're doing a great. You know, community need survey of all our families and, and working with a bunch of partners on that. So I think it's a great idea for, for next week. We'll give you an update on that. I'd like to see if James, Principal James Cook, who's on the line, I tried to give James the night off tonight, but he joined in anyway. And now that he's here. James, anything else to add to Melissa's question, just about specifically the high school? I know you guys are doing remote learning, you know, academy during the month of September, you know, with students in the school. I saw those set up, you know, but how, how else are you? Have your, has your team been thinking about, you know, like connecting with the kids who you know that may not fall into a, you know, state-defined? Or definition of what high-needs, but you, you, your team, your teachers know that they need some extra support, extra attention. Help us to understand how your, how your team's thinking about that, if you could.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you for asking. So the. First of all, as you had mentioned, we will have remote learning spaces here at Gloucester High School. So where students. Who sign, sign up for that, you know, so we know where, where kids are. We'll have. Setting up library space as well as cafeteria space for students to be able to, with difficulty with remote learning. Supported and supervised space for students to be able to do their remote learning while they're here. But along the lines of what Patty was saying, we also know that emphasizing in. A lot of the professional development that folks, in fact, that was the theme of the day this morning, Ben, when you launched us off. On our PD today was using all the tools that we have. To engage with students and build relationships very intentionally from the beginning of the year. During this, and this is true for all students. All students have needs and have unique needs to, to those students. And so we've prioritized using our tools digitally to. Build relationships with all students. And what does that look like? So today, that is the very thing. Student engagement in the first week, two weeks of school is explicitly what we need to do for all of our students. And then, as Patty was saying. Using our SST to keep a very, our student study team to, and, and teacher feedback to keep close. Pay close attention to students who may not be engaging in, in remote learning as, as we would, as much as we would like to. And encouraging those students to participate in our remote learning centers. And early. Outreach to students right from the beginning of the year is knowing exactly what committee members have mentioned. Knowing that that is the case, that this engagement right from the beginning is crucial. We've built in. Teachers being very intentional about relationship building in all classes. We've built in the remote learning centers. And we've built in SST work, you know, collaborating with teachers on engaging students. Who, who may not be fully engaged from the beginning.
Thank you, James. I see, John, I see Kathy's hand up.
I'm so, I'm sorry, I can't see everybody and I, if I look at the.
That's okay. I'll pipe up if I, if no one sees me. So my question has to do with kind of a reporting and or. I don't know if it would be a ticket system or however, I'm thinking if, you know, something as basic as technology needs of certain families. Is a very. You know, logistical issue with respect to the technology group. But then what if a family feels that their child is, is kind of struggling with the model they picked? Or they feel they need more support, but maybe the student doesn't quite know how to reach out for that support? Is, you know, is there a way, I mean, you're gonna, I don't want people to be inundated in the first week of school. Because of course we know there are going to be a certain timeframe for things to smooth out. But at a certain point, you may find some families saying. This part's working, this part needs this, you know, how, what mechanism at each school, I guess, is probably a school level. Outreach by parents to the principal, but do we have anything set up for those kinds of inquiries? And or asking for help in certain areas?
We don't have any specifically that, that we've worked on from the district office across schools. I think you actually. I think you actually touched on something here, there at the end, Kathy, about, you know, how do you normally reach out when you're having a concern about your child? And, you know, the first step there always is the teacher, or needs to be the teacher, if not the guidance counselor, if not the principal, you know, so, but I would just ask, it's possible, if any of the principals have been working on this specifically, I would just, I ask you to chime in or raise your hand. I think the other piece is, and I don't know what Gloucester did about this in the springtime, but, you know, really developing an additional way to provide that input, to raise concerns from, you know, families. Typically, those are best addressed at the teacher level, at the school level, that sort of thing. But we need to reach out as well and make sure that input's welcome. So I'm not sure if any principal want to chime in on that, but that's certainly a helpful thought there.
That's okay, without anybody chiming in on the response. And I have a second question. So, and maybe it's early to be thinking, but what if a student has a sore throat, right? People are going to have a cold, they're going to have whatever, so they're not going to be able to come to school. And so you're a family that chose the hybrid model, and you ideally want your kid in school, but they can't be physically in school. What is the mechanism to keep that kid caught up with their, with their class? You know, it's easier, obviously, under normal circumstances, but this is now an exceptional one where a kid feels fine, but maybe having a cough, right?
Yes, yeah, I would say this is one of the most difficult pieces of many difficult pieces to work out. Because, you know, in the past, we all knew how to do this. If a child was sick for, you know, a day or two, not much would happen. They would just let them be sick and they'd get better and they'd come back to school, right? If they're out for a little bit further, a little bit longer than that, you know, they work with the teacher to get materials that they can do to keep, you know, to keep up, that sort of thing, and teachers have been always great about that. You know, the world shifted a little bit here, so now we have a scenario where, hmm, if a child's out for a while and we've been doing all this remote teaching, well, should they get remote teaching as well? You know, where in the past, we never thought of that, right? That wasn't even a consideration. Now it can be. At the same time, you know, they're also sick and, you know, should we bother them with that? Or in this case, maybe there's some quarantine. So that's a piece, I would say, that still is one of these works in progress. Now, we have to figure out, you know, a teacher has, you know, one way that we're thinking about this is the remote and pacing, the remote is comparable to the pacing in school. And can you do that so they could shift over to remote? We also, that's already really, really big, so that's not an easy thing to do. What does a classroom teacher do in that case? So I'm just trying to share some of the thinking we're doing, but also to acknowledge that this is one of the areas that, that we're, you know, sort of, you know, working through and struggling with.
Right, and I'm kind of thinking about the scenario where a kid really would have been fine going to school, right? You feel, you know, yeah, I've got a cough, but I feel fine, right? But we don't want them in school, so they could participate in the afternoon, right? They don't need to be completely absent for the whole day. And so I guess just thinking through those scenarios so kids don't fall behind any farther than they would need to be in terms of the in-school time versus the remote time that hopefully they participate in.
Right, and that's, that's a, that's also likely scenario, because if a whole class is quarantined because of a case, but everyone else in the classroom hopefully is feeling fine. You know, in some ways, that matter is a little bit easier because the whole, I'm thinking K to five here, okay? I'm just thinking K to five. It could also happen at an older grade, too, just goes remote, you know? But it's when you have a couple of kids, a few kids perhaps, so. And again, that's a, that whole idea of someone is out and needs to stay out, but they're healthy, is also new to all of us, right? That's, that's part of this new world, right? So, but again, that's, that is one of the stickiest wickets. And I've reached out to superintendents and others, we're reaching out to get an understanding of how folks are approaching that.
Amy want to say something?
I see, oh, Amy? She'll chime in if you don't-
Joel has his hand up.
Okay, Joel, go ahead.
So to that kind of thread about students being home despite, you know, feeling okay, but displaying some symptoms, is there, as part of the professional development and the protocols that are being put in place, strategies for helping students deal with the anxiety of, you know, of when a fellow student or a teacher actually gets diagnosed with COVID-19? And now they're out, and, you know, if you're a fourth grader, I assume you've seen enough news that you kind of have an understanding of the dangers of this disease, and if you have a teacher that you love and who's out sick with COVID, you know, they may be, you know, having a mild case and maybe having a severe case. But either way, you have to imagine there's going to be a lot of anxiety racing through that classroom. And then, you know, God forbid, a student or a teacher does become severely ill and has to be hospitalized or something. You know, it's a small island, everyone's going to know that happened. We have, you know, we're working on protocols and we're working on strategies to make sure that students are given the necessary amount of comfort and guidance to allow them to handle this new anxiety. You know, of, you know, to be blunt, to say, my friend left the classroom, and I don't know if my friend's ever coming back. My teacher left the classroom, I don't know if my teacher's ever coming back. Is that being worked on? You'd have to imagine that's going to be a huge impediment to education continuing once, you know, someone's buddy is out sick with COVID.
I, I don't have an answer for that right now. Patty or other folks, we don't have some of our leaders on here. We may have to look more into that and get back to you on that. It's a real concern, it's a really important concern to raise, and thank you for raising it. But I don't think I have an answer for you at this point, but we can get back to you on it.
Ben, I can just make a couple of comments about that in general terms. This week, we started a series of psychological first aid for teachers and how to recognize stress in students and how to respond to questions that they may have that are related to, not necessarily the virus in general, but just the issues that we are upon us in this different way of learning. And how to be empathetic and listen and how to be an active listener and how to respond to students that may be experiencing stress. You know, and as you know, we can't necessarily identify why a student is being out, is out. We can't say that that student is out because of the virus. But there are initiatives within the district to work with teachers and how to respond to stress with students.
Okay. Ms. Watson has her hand up?
Yep, Samantha, go ahead.
Before we all sort of, before the pandemic, the Gloucester Police Department came and presented on a new program. Can somebody remind me of the name where they were gonna inform the school if there had been like a trauma with a particular kid? Does anyone remember the name of that? No?
I remember what it is, I don't remember what they called it.
Melissa, maybe, do you know? You're muted.
What was the question again?
Before the pandemic, the Gloucester Police Department came and presented on-
Well, it's called Handle With Care.
Thank you, Maria. So I'm curious, where is that, has that been happening during the pandemic? Yes, okay, so this-
But maybe in a different way, you know, I mean, obviously, they're limited, but there's access to that program.
Yeah, I guess I was just thinking in a similar vein to Joel, schools sort of being aware of a kid's baseline since not seeing them since March, right? How important it is to sort of know if anything serious has happened since the last time that we've seen them? And whether or not schools have been getting that information since being closed. Does anybody know?
May I speak to that? This is Talina.
Of course you can, Talina.
So we met with the chief of police and the chief of the fire department on, this week after school, and we asked if that was going to continue this year. And they said that they would absolutely do that and that they would continue to enhance that program. But they're definitely committed to it.
Thank you, Talina.
Yes, that is another thing we did this week, was a safety and security meeting, an update with the fire chief and police chief. So, which I, thank you for reminding me of, Talina. Yep, that's exactly what, that's one of the things that our principal was asked about.
Great, I think it's just such a helpful, especially not having eyes on kids as often as we would normally. I think it's just a great program, and I'm glad that our community has it already rolling.
Just as another update related to that meeting, Chief Conley, Police Chief Conley asked about whether, you know, we wanted to have the school resource officers back in our schools. And it was, you know, absolutely was the answer to that. He was just making sure in terms of, you know, protocols and people in the buildings and other people who weren't teachers or weren't staff in the buildings. But, but it was an unequivocal, unequivocal yes, that's a great partnership for us. It's a great way for our students and really the police officers to get to know students on a really, you know, genuine level. And so that's another, just a quick update on that. I'm going to keep going, there's a few more updates here to go through, I want to make sure that yourselves in the community are aware of. So let me move on to facilities, and that includes our buildings. So this is a photo, some folks may have seen, it was posted by GTA. And it's telling part of the story here, this is West Parish, this happens to be our classroom that is the, has the most number of students and the most number of desks of any class across the whole district. You can see this is set up for third graders, those are some very big third graders in that photo right there. They're actually teachers, that's showing three feet of distance with masks. That's the minimum we have anywhere right there, that's the most crowded classroom we have in our, in our district right now. I want to show you other ones as they're set up, because we've been doing that, these are set up for classes based on the number of students who are going to be there. So I'll show you a couple of photos from each school, this is just focused on K to five. So this is Beeman, Beeman is also one of our more crowded schools. But you see on the left-hand side, grade three classroom, that's set up for nine students, and it's set up for the students who they're expecting at this point. These aren't like fictional setups, these are real setups in our classrooms that teachers have been doing this week. So that's a grade three classroom on the left with setup for, has five-foot distancing at a minimum. Some of these, that's five foot at the closest in this class, some of them have six feet. On the right-hand side is set up for eighteen, a grade one classroom has eighteen students, and that's three-foot distancing as well at a minimum. Some of those actually look bigger to me, but that's just me. But it's really, what we're told to measure in terms of the distance, just to be consistent, is three feet between, the distance between edge of seats, not desks, because that's, edge of seats, I suppose are, you know, where students are sitting, I guess, right? Here's East Gloucester, so on the left-hand side, that's showing five feet apart. I don't know what grade level these classrooms are, but they're setups that our photos are taken today. And at the, at the right-hand side is six feet. I'll show you the table that has the distances and the range and class sizes range for, across all the K to fives in a moment.
Melissa has a question?
Oh, okay.
I just wanted to repeat what you said, so it's three feet from the chair, not the desk?
Yeah, it's chair to chair, chair edge to chair edge is the way we've been told to measure it, that's how we're measuring it. I mean, that's how the state's measuring it, that's how, what they've said to us in terms of the American Academy of Pediatricians.
So which question, this is important for me to understand. So how did you set up the chair to determine three feet away? Is it when a child is sitting in it, is it when it's close to the chair, or is it pushed back a little?
I think Principal would have to answer that.
And let me, let me tell you why I'm asking. So we are used to the six-foot distance, and when we go into restaurants, it says you have to be six feet away. When they do that calculation in restaurants, it's six foot from the point of point to table. So it's not six feet from the chair. So I'm just trying to come to terms with this three-foot thing, which we all know I'm not that comfortable with. But if you're adding the chair and then adding the three feet, you're actually, they're more than three feet away. You know, according to what we're used to in a restaurant. In other words, when you go into a restaurant, it's from table to table. But if you put somebody at a chair, sitting at the table, they're, they're not six feet apart from the person eating next to them. So we're so accustomed to that six-foot number. But in the classrooms, we're actually going above three feet of what we're used to seeing people being spaced apart. Because three feet actually means a little bit more if you're going from chair pushed out a little bit to the next desk.
Well, Melissa, I'd be careful about that, because if you're to my right and I scoop my chair all the way to the right side of my desk and you scoot your chair all the way to the left side of your desk, if we're doing three feet while these desks are centered, now you and I are like two feet apart and I'm handing you, you know, my gross pencil.
Well, that's, that's what I'm trying to understand, that's just why I'm asking this question. Because you know me on the licensing board, I have this questions with restaurants all the time, and it's table to table, not chair to chair, six feet apart. So by adding the chair to this, you actually should be creating more space from a desk, and that's why I'm asking. That's why I'm trying to understand it.
So I'll have Dan Jude answer in a moment, but I just want to, I don't want to mix, you know, venues here. Because if you talk about restaurants, six feet, that's the same for us. If folks are eating, they've got to be six feet apart. Because of course, if you're in a restaurant, you don't have a mask on, you know? And, but we're talking about masks, we're talking about, you know, regular hand hygiene, which, you know, I'm not sure who's, anybody doing hand hygiene in restaurants, you know? So hand hygiene, masks. So we're measuring, you know, chair, chair edge to chair edge. And that's just, you know, the standard we're looking at. Dan, I don't know if you want to add into, I know you've been really great at the spacing, you've been doing a plum cove and have some of the most distances, you know, I've seen and creative seating that I've seen, which has really create good distance. How are you doing it there?
So with measuring, we're measuring, like, the chair is pushed in, measuring whether it's three feet, five feet, or six feet to the next chair pushed in. With the assumption being that when you put children in it, they're going to occupy the seat in approximately the same size, if that makes sense. So chairs pushed in, but then also the assumption is when this kid sits down, that chair will go back, but so will the chair behind them as that child takes their seat.
Yeah.
Chair pushed in basically means the side of the desk then, because if it's pushed in, then it's just like it's the side of the desk. Am I correct in understanding that?
Well, if I understand correctly, so that's kind of front to back, and then side to side, it would be from the right edge to the next chair, the left edge to the next chair.
So it's literally three feet then, with no child in it?
Yeah, so seat edge to seat edge, in some cases, I have examples of three, and others it would be six.
Right, so, and what I'm trying to show is that in some places, definitely we have three feet in terms of the way it's spaced right now. And there, I think can be some further improvements there. But for example, East Gloucester has, you know, five feet apart is the closest, and six feet apart, we also have six feet apart and further. At Veterans, same thing, six feet apart in a grade four classroom there. In grade two, it's five and six feet apart, so some are five feet apart, some are six feet apart. And then West Parish, this is the closest, I've said, this is, West Parish has our biggest class size, and I'll show you that in a moment. You know, on the left there, that's three feet, and on the right, it's three feet. But I also see, you know, that there is room to space, those out further. So, you know, it's got to be continued to look, continue to look at these and how we're setting them up, because we do want to have it as always, as most space as possible. And then Plum Cove here again, Plum Cove has been able to do it, so all classrooms are six feet apart. So just to summarize that, so you see the class, this is, I'm just focusing K to five tonight. I think it's where the greatest concern is, because we know we're getting six feet at middle school. Class size range at Beeman is nine to twenty students, okay? A twenty may go down, just because they're sort of estimating high for kindergarten right now, because kindergarten refrigeration is still coming in across the district. Their range is three feet to five feet, so that varies class to class. East Gloucester, class size range is seven, oh, I'm sorry, the last column there is about those numbers of students choosing remote. Because obviously, if kids, as kids choose remote, the class size goes down. So that's why I see, say, East Gloucester, class size is pretty small in a couple of classes. They have a four-point-five feet to six-foot range there. That includes their three classes of grade five, so grade five at East Gloucester is their biggest class, are their biggest classes. And they figured out a way to divide- And they figure out a way to divide two classes into three in order to get the proper spacing. Plum, Plum Cove, as I mentioned, is all six feet in terms of the range, just distance, sorry, and their class size range from 11 to 15. Veterans varies eight to 16 in terms of number of students in a class and they're four feet to six feet with most of them at five to six feet. And then West Parish, again, our tightest classrooms, three feet to 3.5 feet. What folks have been doing is getting extra furniture out of rooms where possible, they want to keep like a teacher desk or a small group, you know, workspace in there. So again, this continues to be work in progress. I made a lot of progress here. You know, three of the, they are all, all schools have, you know, areas of five feet at least. And a couple of schools, Beeman and, and West Parish are still hovering in that three to three and a half or four feet range. I see Joel's hand up.
Thank you. So I appreciate, I understood Mr. Joe was saying as far as the front to back, obviously you're measuring, you know, the seats all pushed in with the assumption that when the student in the first row sits down and pushes back out. The student in the second row will also push back out a similar distance and that whatever distance it is will, will translate. I still haven't quite heard anything that speaks about the side to side transition. I just saw in those West Parish pictures, it looks like the tracks of the seats are pretty, pretty tight inside the tracks of the desks. So there isn't a lot to shift left and right. I mean, obviously a child could push that chair out, scoot over two inches and start pushing back in and then they'd be free to, to scoot further, I suppose. At the last presentation, we saw maybe it was Plum Cove was using some trapezoidal tables. And there were some classrooms that had the chairs at the, gosh, the, the smaller of the parallel sides, which was encouraging spreading them out. But there are also pictures in the last presentation that had seats on the larger parallel side, which again just seems to invite a left to right shift. And so I haven't heard, you know, whether these measurements require all these chairs to be centered on the desk. And once they stop being centered on the desk. You know, I guess I want to make sure that we're talking about the real numbers. You know, this is an old thing in every meeting we have is, you know, these pictures are great and I appreciate all the data, but let's, let's like talk about what's really going to happen when students are in that room. So I agree, the front to back, that three foot distance is going to be preserved, but I haven't heard anything that's going to kind of guarantee the left to right, you know, the example you gave a minute ago. I could be three feet apart and then pretty quickly be only two feet apart if I scooch over half a foot and someone else scoaches toward me half a foot, you know, like that sort of stuff. Is that being factored in?
Um, so a couple of things, another, what happened last week, of course, it's hard to update folks on every single thing that's happening, but um, we moved a lot of those tables out and brought desks in. And that brought desks in from St. Anne's for younger grades typically. Also then brought desks from the high school as well. There's been a lot of moving around of desks and tables. So, you know, we have much fewer elementary classrooms that have tables now that, which is what you're, you know, you were referring to in that first one. You know, yes, students will move. That is guaranteed. You know, people will walk around rooms. That is guaranteed. You know, we don't expect and nor, nor, you know, should we that, you know, students stay in one spot, you know, for hours on end. That isn't good teaching or good for anybody. I do want to remind folks that, and this is really, really important. I know we're focusing on distancing now because that's something people wanted to bring up and we want to explain it to you. But as Karen Carroll said, you know, the distancing isn't the make or break thing. You know, it is a thing that's new to folks because there's a different distance than we've been working on. But what is a make or break here is the level of COVID in our community and how we respond to that moment. If there isn't COVID in the classrooms and, you know, it doesn't really, I'm not saying we should make distances smaller, then, you know, then, then, you know, then distance doesn't matter as much. And still we need to have distance and have masks and be careful of movement. And, and another big thing here, which I actually haven't mentioned tonight is, is about people staying home when they're sick, you know, or if they're having symptoms. So it's all those things working together, you know, in concert, as well as our teachers working with their students and students working with each other, you know, to stay safe, to stay out if you have symptoms and also to, you know, be respectful of each other's space. So I do understand the, the concern about space and distancing. But we really got to look at this as, as all these pieces, pieces working together. And one of them, I'd say the one that is make or break. That we of course will be paying very close to get attention to is community transmission. I mean, that, that goes up and, you know, and, and cases happening in Gloucester. You know, that's the thing that, that is the make or break here.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And so like, I, I like, I appreciate what you just said because there is this focus and obviously, you know, as you alluded to, it doesn't make sense to throw the distancing out the window. But, you know, the reality is we're not hinging our ability to safely reengage in these classrooms on whether the desks are three or six feet apart. We're hinging it on mask protocol and community transmission as the major drivers of it. And these are just, you know, secondary bonus precautions that are being taken. And so if that's the case, then, you know, it's difficult because we put these presentations on and say, hey, look, don't worry, we have the desks five or six feet apart, you know, in most of the schools. And then you go, okay, well, let's break that down. And we go, well, you know, it doesn't really matter if they're three or six feet apart because if no one's sick in the classroom, they can't get each other sick, you know? It just, it's, it's, it's seemingly two different messages. And I think what you just responded to me sounds like, you know, the more realistic one of, of how this works out when, when the students and the teachers get back in there.
Yeah, I think you're right. You know, I mean, it's hard to give everyone the full picture every time, you know? So we try to stress different pieces in different times. Last week it was the high school, tonight in facilities, tonight we facilities and this distancing, you know, because we have more information than we had a week ago, you know, because people are actually in the school setting them up, you know, so we can really give you information and, and accurate information. So. But I think I agree with you, Mr. Vazza, that, that it's, you know, it's all these pieces together. And so, but I do understand that, you know, I did guess that that's a, a good point to make is. We don't want to say it's, it's one of these things and one of these things is, is, is the magic piece. It's them working together in concert and that's important for all of us to remember. Thank you.
Um, I have a question.
Go ahead.
So I completely respect that, you know, this is really about low community transmission, as Joel said. We're operating on the assumption that with low community transmission, there's not going to be a body in the room with COVID or there's going to be a low likelihood. However, what Karen Carroll said respectfully was, you know, three is better than one, six is better than three, like the, the, the distance does matter if on an off chance. A kid comes into the classroom and sneezes, right? I mean, we, we, we hope it doesn't happen, but it's pretty likely that it's going to happen sometime somewhere. And I just want to point out, we're going to be dealing with the mask policy tonight. Right now, K and one, and I hope we can change this in the policy, are not mandated to wear masks. So a third of these classrooms will be with kids without masks potentially. So I just want to, you know, sort of put that in there that right now with DESI guidelines, they're saying three to six feet. And pre-K through one are not required to wear masks. So, you know, it's all the pieces together. I completely agree. And then we have to look at all the pieces grade by grade. And it's, you know, they're, they're not all the same, I guess is what I want to say. And, you know, I'm still uncomfortable with three feet. We all know that. But, you know, I also just want to point out that we are also dealing with kindergartners and first graders who are not at this moment required to wear masks.
Okay, Laura, this, you know.
My question is not about the distance, but I, my question is, are we having any issues with getting enough furniture for our preschool classrooms? I mean, have we been able to outfit from the various sources of where we know we have desks and, and things like that? I just wanted to make sure we are not in need of things that, that, you know, that we might be, figure out how to make sure we, we have everything we need.
That is a very timely question. Just today I was taught, I, I'm aware, I'm aware of that need in terms of outfitting the preschool classrooms. And went and actually, you know, stopped by one of the classrooms today to ask them about, you know, that in particular. And they were, it was a great group of folks. They, they were very proud to show off their classroom and the progress they made. Because I was in there earlier this week and they've made a lot of progress. But my message to them was, you know, let's, let's not go buy things yet. Let's, because a lot of these tables, as I mentioned, have been moved to St. Anne's or, or, you know, in our, may not be being used by our, our elementary schools. And, and so talked to Director Emery Jordan and about, you know, shopping in St. Anne's and going over herself to see them and then also to, to, uh, maybe take some staff there to see what's, what's, what's usable. Because, you know, we want, you know, we're doing different approaches. Some are, you know, you know, soft seating on the, on the, on the floor. Some can be tables. Some can be desks for kindergarten. And you could have something comparable, you know, variety of options there at preschool. So I think we're working on those. I'm not sure if, if Ms. Jordan, she's on the call here, if she wants to add to that. But it's certainly, preschool is a area, you know, of great concern about, you know, they have to move a lot of things out. They've got, they've been bolting and rebolting things that are on the floor. There's been a concern about carpets there and, you know, concerned about whether that's compliance with DESI. Carpets are certainly fine by DESI's requirements. It's area rugs that they say very clearly need to get out and get out of classrooms. But I'm not sure, Emery, if you want to add anything to that?
Sure. Um, hello, everyone. So yeah, tables are a little bit of a concern. You know, preschool is all about social interaction and social skill development. And what we're trying to do is put together classrooms that allow for that in some semblance, but also allow for social distancing. So we're going from larger early childhood tables, round tables, rectangular tables to more individual tables, as well as some other alternative seating. We have made some, some very good progress up to this point. Staff have been scouring every place to find that. We have received some donations. We also have a preschool that is closed, has closed in Rockport, has donated some tables as well. But with our numbers, we still need some more. I have been in touch with the elementary principals and they've been trying to help out. And as Ben stated, I am going to go over to St. Anne's with a couple of staff tomorrow to see if there's any other types of tables that we can find there. But I, I do have to give my staff really lots of great credit because they're really trying really hard to do that. And they have been making some progress. We do still have a ways to go though.
Yeah.
Melissa?
So on that same conversation, I'm glad Kathy brought it out because as you know, I reached out to you last night asking about that because there seems to be some messaging in the community that we need preschool equipment. And that we're not prepared for our preschool, rugs aren't torn up where they're supposed to be. We don't have the desks and tables that are sitting on yoga mats and they're going to have to sit on yoga mats for five hours and they're going to have to eat on the yoga mat. So I, I think we really need to pull this conversation together and have the messaging to the community be that we're working on it. We could buy what we don't have and that we're not seeking donations and that we are prepared. I mean, donations, to seek donations from schools is one thing, but the messaging in the community is that we're not prepared for preschool, for whatever reason. So I think we really need to figure that out and get a report back to the committee of, do we have to send this to be enough to look to buy tables quickly or not? Because leaving families with the impression that we're not prepared is not where we want to be. And to be honest with you, I think that's the public perception right now. So I'm glad Kathy brought that up because it is a concern out there. So I don't know if tomorrow, some sort of messaging can go out to preschool parents. That kids won't be sitting on mats for five hours and eating on mats because we did find furniture. Or that they're going to use mats, but only for a couple of hours, you know, something to that effect. Because the messaging is not good on preschool.
So it's, let's be clear. It's not, it's not our messaging. Okay. I would prefer not to seek donations from, from private, you know, community members. That's not the way our school system should operate. And that's why, you know, I'm very clear about, we got to go, you know, look at what we have in-house. So I think that's very, very important that we don't solicit donations from folks, you know, we don't go out, you know, on social media and, 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 you know, request things that we haven't already. If we haven't already looked very closely at what we have in-house. You know, I think, I think it's a, it's a, it is a, is a great resource as you, as I agree with you on this, Melissa, in terms of like, if there's a closed down school and getting surplus furniture, I think that's very smart. But no, that's, that's some, it's troubling to have that sort of communication out there.
So, so I also just want to reiterate that the staff is not just, it's not just an issue of whether it's yoga mats versus tables. It really is creating an environment and that's what the staff is working on right now in creating an environment that's as close as possible to, to what an appropriate early childhood classroom should look like and how it should operate in order for it to be successful, in order for us to achieve our objectives and goals in working with children and, and educating them. And so that's why we're looking at combinations of things such as yoga mats, such as lap trays, such as small tables, such as creating small, not as many centers, but centers so that students can be engaged with staff in the classroom. And they've been working really hard at being able to do that. Yes, there is a perception. And I think that that's unfortunate. And I'm, I would very strongly say that we are as best as possible as any other school. We are going to be providing within the restrictions that we have, because we are in a pandemic, we are going to provide the best education for preschoolers that come to our program as we are allowed to within the context of a pandemic.
Thank, thank you, Emery. I think that's, you know, what you really touched on here is, you know, this is a work in progress. I mean, the, the preschool is a work in progress. If you come here, you'll see how hard folks are working and to set things up, to change things, move things around. And, and so, you know, we're three days in on trying to figure it out and they're doing a great job. And so it's, it is, you know, pictures, messages, that sort of stuff that, that, that are out there are even what I'm showing you is still a work in progress, you know? And so, but, but I never ever want anyone to, and I don't think I was doing this, you know, question how hard these folks are working and looking under every, you know, possible, you know, corner to figure things out and, and trying things and moving things around again and then again. Because as Emery said, you know, whether it's preschool, you know, middle school, third grade or our high school, folks are really, really working to figure out how they can create these environments that are best for their kids. And, and they're still working on it. Jonathan, I can see.
Joel.
Okay.
Also, and then Samantha.
Okay.
Ben, could you do me a favor and go to, I think it was your last slide that had the chart of the number of students in a class. Yeah, there we go. I'm just trying to do some quick math to figure out. So, you know, it looks like that's in East Gloucester, that's going to be roughly 25% choosing remote, Plum Cove.
I can actually just give you the real number, the real percentages.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yep. So, um, let's go from the top here. Beeman is 18%. East Gloucester is 26%. Plum Cove is 16%. Betts is 26%. And West Parish is 17%. Was that probably too fast, but?
No, that was fine. Give the overall. So what?
One second. 19.6, 20%.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Samantha, you had a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to be careful that we didn't breeze by Laura's very important comment about K through two not being required to wear masks. And I think we can probably dive deeper into that when, when we talk about the mask policy. But Ben, do you have available, how many classrooms K through two are not six foot distance at this point, based on numbers?
No, not just right here. No, not this moment.
And I believe it's K and one, not K through.
K and one, yeah. K and one, yeah, I was gonna say the same thing. Yeah.
So, so, so.
Pre-K, K, that's, that's what I meant to say. Sorry about that.
We can talk about this at, when we take up the policy, I'm sure there'll be a lot of discussion. But that's, you know, not, not, shouldn't have asked that question. I'm just saying that.
Yeah, no, I, I don't wanna. But maybe in preparation for that discussion, it would be helpful to know how many of them are not six foot distance.
Right, I agree.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, so let me just move on to a few other things here, if that's okay?
Yes, go ahead.
So facilities, again, we continue to make progress and work on this. Mr. Pope announced a September 8th meeting with, I believe Siemens, a DPW will be presenting. I think it's 10:00 AM, so it's during the workday, so we could get them here. Is that, do you want to say anything more about that, Jonathan?
That's correct. We'll, it'll be a school committee meeting. We will get a presentation from DPW as well as from Siemens. And I'm, I'm not sure about Mitsubishi, but there'll be Mike Hale as well as other people from DPW to speak to the various buildings and their, their suitability to house students. It will be, we won't be having questions from the public. There will be eight questions from the committee. And, but it is at 10 o'clock in the morning because that's when we can get Siemens here, and that's important.
And then there, of course, will be another school committee meeting Wednesday night after that, which will have open, open communication. Yep, no shortage of opportunities here. And so there, as I said, provide update, sorry, on our ongoing upgrades. Wait a minute. Hold on. Wait a minute, something has, we just skipped a lot of slides here. Hold on. Okay, great, here we go. So provide an update on our ongoing upgrades, provide update on testing systems and provide update on the functioning systems. Three key things in, in communicating with Mike Hale this, this week. Just wanted to remind folks the work we're doing to increase fresh air and air exchange. So part of this is what we reported out in more detail by experts, not by me, on Tuesday. So balancing all the systems at the seven schools, that helps us validate the air flows in existing units and then also provide information about how to, you know, increase airflow. So the balancing and the testing does that. Open windows, continue to open windows at Beam at the four schools that can, that have open windows. And then also run systems for longer after the end of the day and earlier in the morning. So that's, that's one of the, those are the areas we're working on to increase fresh air, air exchange, a vital piece. Filtering and disinfecting air. So again, all airflow has been changed numerous times. Air is safe, as we know, and we'll report, report on that more next week, I think. But then also want to go further than that even. And that's part of what Mr. Pope was talking about in terms of expenditures and bonding to improve these further. And that would include ionization units, which help combat airborne pathogens and viruses. Those would be done as soon as the units are available. But again, I, more about that on Tuesday, upcoming. And then cleaning ventilation systems. So these have all, these have been cleaned. They may all be complete at this point. I don't quite know exactly. But I know they're complete here at Two Blackburn with the preschool and the administrative offices. And so the intake vents have been cleaning and vacuumed. So that's, you know, cleaning the ventilation systems. Another piece of the guidance is ensuring systems are fully operational. So we're upgrading, I shouldn't say we, DPW and partners are upgrading air conditioning pumps at O'Malley, repairing something called an air damper actuator at GHS. You know, and then also installing touch, touch bathroom fixtures as well, which is another suggestion or recommendation from DESI. So, but more information on that in Q and A with the committee and DPW next week. But I just want to say again, you know, these are things we've been reporting on every week or every meeting, I should say. You know, there, there are updates that are ongoing and happening. And we continue to try to be responsive both to the committee's concerns and the public's concerns and, and really address these issues. And, you know, these have been kept up, but they can be kept up further. And, and so really want to be responsive to, and then the city certainly is too by allocating hundreds of thousands of dollars to continue to upgrade the systems. The last thing about, about facilities, and then I'll just pause, is today, we award the external contracts for additional cleaning services that'll happen during the day. That's supplementing our custodians. So we have custodians there, there still. But additional custodial services, and that'll help in, you know, ongoing cleaning throughout the day. Including high-touch surfaces, disinfecting, you know, wiping, cleaning, and being there for additional support. We will have specific cleaning protocols. They are part of the RFQ there and DPW is defining them in terms of, you know, what will be happening every day during the school day. And we'll make sure then what happens also at night in terms of cleaning, disinfecting. And we'll make sure that, that every one of the community gets those clear protocols in ways that they can understand them, understand them easily. I see Mr. Vavaz's hand up.
Go ahead, Joel.
Awarded the contract to whom?
We, we, the public schools awarded to, there was a bidding process. I don't know the name of the, of the firm. They were notified. We have to work out a contract with them, so it's not set yet. But they were notified today of being the, you know, the awarded of the four, of the four qualifying bids.
When I voted today at East Gloucester, there was a fellow there with a Clean Pro t-shirt on. I don't know if that's relevant.
I don't, he might have been voting, I don't know. And I hope he voted yesterday.
He was, yes, today, he was cleaning the doors handles.
Okay.
People came and went.
I, I hope we hired him. No, I'm not sure, honestly. Anything else about that, about facilities, questions, or what we're doing on cleaning? Or Mr. Fish is here, if there are other questions, he might be able to answer them better than I can? Nope.
Once again, I can't see everybody, so if you have a question, please just speak up.
Okay. Sorry, one second here. And just a couple more before we're done. No, clean protocols. After-school use of facilities, this is an important one. I wanted to make sure the, important and very challenging issue and that I want to make sure the school committee is aware of, that we're working on but not finding great solutions on, very honestly. This is also a piece we've been working on with the community stakeholders. So obviously, it's well-known, there's a significant need for after-school care and programming, especially with our, I'm focusing K to five again. Especially for K to five, especially because you have a shorter day. Now, of course, there's some challenges here that are tip, are atypical, new, new because of this year. I just want to, I want to go through those with you. Most students are leaving the building at 12 o'clock or 12:45, depending what school they go to, but not all. As we've talked about, our high needs learners or some high needs learners are gonna remain in the buildings until, you know, 2:00 or 2:45. On top of that, of course, the school day continues. It continues remotely, but it continues until 2 o'clock or 2:45, depending what, what school you're in. And so in terms of after-school providers who are either onsite, you know, our typical partner, of course, is the YMCA. They've been a great partner to us. Or any off-site, you know, after-school providers, you know, are gonna need to support students in that 90 minutes remote learning immediately after the, they leave school, okay? So if I have a family and I go to a private after-school provider, you know, it's really important for those after-school providers, for us to know who they are and for them to realize that their kids are still in school and they got, gotta be doing their remote learning work. In terms of our facilities, using our facilities for this sort of thing, it's a little bit, it's, it's quite, it's proving quite challenging, I should say. Schools still have students in them, obviously. Teachers will still be using the classrooms to a large, large extent, either by being there and, and teaching remotely or having students in them. Our gym, our gym cafeteria spaces, of course, they're, they're the same in four of our elementary schools. Maybe repurposed for learning spaces or needed for high needs students. You know, so there isn't a sort of readily available spaces. But then there are also some health concerns here as well. You know, which, you know, bury in, in likelihood, but there's still, we have, you know, concerns about them. I just want to raise those with you. Typically, in after-school, any after-school program, students are mixed by grade. You don't have them just in specific grades, but we're doing a lot of work at our elementary schools to keep kids, not only by grade, but by classroom. So you have some mixing of grade level cohorts. At the same time, for any after-school provider, it's really, really hard to staff just based on grade level. You know, you're increasing your, you're doubling or more your, your, your staff levels. And that's complicated because where you say a group of 13 students, which is a typical, you know, group size for after-school, that's made up of, you know, say, second grade students and third grade students normally, or second, third and fourth perhaps. If you divide it by just grade level cohorts, you have a much smaller number of students in those groups. It's very, it's difficult if impossible to staff each group. You know, this isn't cost-effective, honestly. Another concern that's been raised from the school level is just concerns by introducing a new set of students into a classroom environment. Now, it's, no, no other students are there, but say you have a fifth grade classroom and you introduce, you know, K one, two students in that classroom. Is there a concern there? Okay, not clear that's a real issue, but we have, you know, folks have, have raised just questions about it. Another piece that, that principals have raised, specifically principals have raised this one, is, you know, could we begin after-school program in the schools a couple of weeks after we get up and running? So we know things are, you know, happening, they're good. We got a handle on them in, in, before we introduce, you know, another, another variable here. So we're open to ideas here and, 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 and solutions. But I want to make sure you're aware of, and, and we've been working with the YMCA. Spoke to one of the education directors this more, this afternoon. Had a meeting with them last week as well. It's just not something that, that is, you know, has readily apparent answers at this point because of these complexities. I wanted to raise it with you. So any further questions on that or open to ideas, open to? Yeah, I see, Jonathan, I see Melissa's hand up and also Laura's.
Okay, go ahead, Melissa.
So back to the YMCA, I found it ironic that in Rockport, they voted to go remote because it wasn't safe to send the kids to school. But now the YMCA seems to be doing a full-fledged program in their schools, dividing it up by grade. So it kind of sounds like something, even though it's contradictory to me, but it sounds like something we'd be looking for here if we had the right amount of kids. So I guess looking at the Rockport model of what the YMCA is doing down there might be helpful. But if you've had the conversation with them already, then so be it. But I guess the biggest concern is, as much as I would advocate for all the services in the world, we do have to worry about commingling the kids through different grades. And I don't, I don't, really don't know what that solution is, if there's not enough kids to really pay a staff member to keep them separated. So it's a difficult conversation. So I think doing outreach to the community to see if there's different programs going on that weren't happening before COVID. To use different spaces would be the way to proceed to try to find these kinds of services. Like if there's a church that didn't do it last year that's doing it this year, maybe for fourth grade or something. I don't know, that's, that's a tough one, but there has to be a solution somehow because there's so many working parents out there that are gonna be depending on it. And if we don't provide it, they're just gonna be doing it in homes and cohorts where the kids, the kids are commingling anyway. So I don't, I don't, I guess I don't even know what the answer is, except for to look at Rockport YMCA program and see if that's something we can sustain here.
Laura?
I just wanted to ask, I know, I, I think the stakeholders group was looking at other spaces such as the library and potentially other sort of facilities where kids could go to do remote learning after school. Is that still in the mix, sort of looking at other, I mean, I know there's already a transportation issue then? If we're, if kids have to get from a school to another space. But is that, is that something we're still looking at?
Uh, uh, yes, so on that, that's, I mean, yes, and, meaning the community stakeholder group has, has been addressing and sort of discussing this and raising, and really just sort of grappling with it, with the complexities, complexities of it. They haven't, we haven't as a group come up with any great answers. I will add a couple of things, though, mentioning other providers. Pathways is certainly doing great work and is, you know, I think will be providing after-school program. And we're working with them on, I think we provide transportation typically to, to their program. I may have that wrong, but, so that's just another great partner in terms of after-school that we're, we've connected with or it's connected with us. The library specifically, so there's the after-school, which we're talking about here. There's also a, you know, remote learning center, a remote learning enrichment center. And that's where we've been, through the community stakeholders group, working with the Sawyer Free Library in order to provide that. Those remote, and those are sort of like remote learning pods where, and that, and that part that's still, still at the end of the school day. The high school, James mentioned that, will be providing the remote learning sort of pod for high school students. The, the middle school may be doing it for, for, for them. And then so Sawyer Free will be doing it for elementary, but that's a small, that's a small number, obviously. But I just want to say sort of both and, that remote learning time. And then after-school programs are thinking about remote learning time plus additional after-school program that goes later than that. I, I don't know if that answered your question or?
Yeah, no, it does. Thank you.
Right. But it's, again, it's, you know, this is one of the areas where we're, we're continuing to struggle on it. Jonathan, I see Ms. Watson's hand up.
Samantha?
Thank you. So part of the community needs survey addressed how many families might need this level of care, right?
Yes.
Okay, and do we, do we have that data back yet or?
I have not looked at it myself. Dawn Leoni, the chairman, chair of the, of the Special Education Parent Advisory Council, as one of her members of the community stakeholders, has offered to crunch that data. So she's gonna give us an update tomorrow when we meet on it. I haven't seen it yet, but, but you're right that, just to give a quick update, the community needs survey, we looked at, asked folks about reliable internet access, after-school needs, mental health needs. If they wanted information on employment, employment resources. So a pretty wide-ranging, certain community-wide survey, I mean, of our school community. And that's gonna help our community partners be able to provide resources broadly, but also in some specific cases, if, if parents ask for it. One of these areas is, is after-school care, as, as Watson's talking about.
And I, you know, in relation to that, I'm curious to learn how many families are really gonna be looking for after-school care. I think the need is there, but I think, listening to what the YMCA staff said during the community stakeholders meeting, that they were surprised, I think at Spindrift, that they had fewer kids than normal because families were sort of more accustomed this year for looking for alternative care. So it, it will be interesting to see how it all shakes out because my guess is that people are already trying to work this out, knowing that there isn't any solid answer about after-school care. That's, I mean, I think I'm being a little optimistic, but I think we might be a little surprised by how many families might actually need this.
Yeah, I think it'll be a big need. I just want to add one more thing, sorry. In talking to the why, Beverly is actually, in some ways, a better model for us because they're doing in their elementary a very similar approach. You know, the shorter day than a remote learning period at, after in person. And so there, you know, as opposed to Rockport, which doesn't have anybody in schools, right, in their school buildings. The challenge, the, the advantage Beverly has is they, all their schools have multiple spaces. They, all their elementary schools have a gym and a cafeteria. We only have that at West Parish. So they have, in their, in their, all their buildings have been redone in the past, you know, relatively recently. So we have one West Parish, they have a bunch of them. So that's just an advantage they have in terms of spaces and that, and that's literally one of our, if we had, if we had obvious spaces to put folks, I think we'd resolve this pretty quickly. It's, it's sort of which spaces can work and on what level of comfort. Talking to Karen Carroll about this, she did say, I talked, walked it through with her in terms of the cohorts. She said, you know, if you kept them small, you know, 10, 13 kids, K to one or K one, two, and didn't, and, and kept those cohorts solid, I mean, you didn't have kids in and out. and didn't, and kept those cohorts solid, I mean, you didn't have kids in and out of those. You know, that's not ideal, but it could be workable because you know who's in there. And so if, if there is a first grade case, you know, if any of those kids in that after school cohort, it's small enough that you know who they were. It's not ideal, you know, the best case scenario is you have, you know, specific after school groups that are just by grade. But she did say that, you know, that's another way you could look at it. It's possible. So it's a consideration and it's a way that that I think would benefit the, the Y could actually staff and talk to them. But again, we have some space concerns and we have, you know, which spaces are we comfortable using in our schools concerns, that sort of thing. So.
Laura. No, no, Samantha.
Just one other follow up question about the Y staffing, knowing that, you know, every other Cape Town community is sort of in the same boat. Are they going to have difficulty finding staff for our programs, knowing that Rockport's going to do sort of a full time program through the staff, I mean, through the YMCA, Beverly's doing it. I'm just curious what their capacity is.
Yeah, that's where that's, we've reached the limit of my ability to talk about their program and their staffing. Yeah, I couldn't speak for them on that, honestly.
Okay.
Want to.
There any, are there any more questions? I don't see any hands. So we'll move on.
So that completes the update for tonight. Just wanted to give you some of the, you know, key areas we're making progress on. You know, I think work and progress, we're making a lot of progress as I, as I hope folks see. And still, as I mentioned numerous times, it's still a work in progress. But that's really the reason that, you know, we move forward with the 10 days that the state has provided us in terms of planning and preparation and, and those are being used well, people are fully engaged and, and I will say this. Having the staff back, working together, you know, as we described, the preschool teachers are working together and that's through, all through our, our grades, our schools. Having them here, working on figuring out some of these details. You know, where do signs go? How does, you know, drop off happen? You know, where should the circles out in the playground go that show kids at a physically distance? You know, all those pieces are, are just a tremendous benefit to have the experience and expertise of our teachers involved in that. So I think we're off to a good start. There aren't, there are bumps and that sort of thing. Obviously, there always will be this year, but I think we're off to a decent start here.
Okay, thank you, Ben. And I am very happy to hear that the teachers are back in school and, and, and learning, lending their expertise to help us solve these problems. It's, it's encouraging that we'll get there in the end. We have two more items on the agenda. The first one is the first reading of a non-discrimination and harassment policy file, file AC to replace harassment policy file ACAB. And I believe Mr. Bach is going to give us the backup on this. Is that correct? You know, we just would like to say that this was not included in our packet, but it is in last week's packet. So if you, I think it got sent out just before the meeting. So if you, you need to be looking at a copy of the, the actual policy, that's where to find it.
This is from last week's eight twenty six packet, the trend, the substitution of the recommended file AC for file ACAB, which we had approved a few weeks ago in light of the federal deadline in, in September, in mid-August. They, the policy that we put in place was from the MASC policy. And we do have, much of our policy book is, is full of MASC policies. They're high quality policies that are used throughout the state. But in this case, I got a, a letter from Michael Joyce, our attorney, who we've worked with for a long time. He's extremely knowledgeable in civil rights, used to, this is, this is kind of work that he used to do at the Boston office, the Civil Rights Office. And he, his recommendation is to adopt the policy that was included in last week's packet. File AC, it's a much shorter policy. And his, his point is that, in his opinion, that the MASC policy is too broad and that it's not justified that it's that broad and that it should, the new regulations apply only to Title IX sexual harassment. So he does not support the MASC policy as written currently and recommends that we write it, that we take the, the current policy. This is a much briefer policy and it directs the superintendent to designate an administrator to serve as a compliance officer. And then about the second to last paragraph that the superintendent shall adopt and publish one or more grievance procedures, adjusting reports of discrimination, harassment, retaliation on the protected classes identified in the policy. And those are pretty extensive grievance policies, which he has provided for us as part of a complete package for, for being able to comply with the new Title IX regulations.
So this is the first reading. And so the first question is whether we want to actually read it into the record or just pass it on. Melissa, you have your hand up.
Well, I have my hand up because I have a lot to say, but going to the issue about reading it, I don't know that we actually need to read it into the record, but I definitely want to have a conversation about it. So with that being said, I'm sure we've all read it because it was in our, I think Stephanie did send this out in a packet for today. So we did have it, but I guess I'm just going to do a motion to waive the actual reading into the record of the policy. Just to save a little bit of time, but that we need, definitely need to have a conversation. So the motion is just to waive reading into the record, the language of the policy.
Second.
Second. Is there any discussion? Okay. You still have your hand up, Melissa, but I.
Well, because I still want to talk about it after the.
Okay, so we'll have a roll call vote on the motion to waive the actual reading of the policy. Maria, could we have a roll call vote?
Chairman Poe?
Yes.
Ms. Prince?
But yeah.
Mayor Taken?
No.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Wiesen?
Yes.
Kathy Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Favaza?
Yes.
Wrong button. Grace, six to one. So now we'll need a motion to accept this as the first reading, which means we'll bring it up again at our next meeting next week for a.
No, 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 we need to discuss this. I mean, we waived, we waived the actual reading of it.
Right.
But I think if there's any input to put on it so that it would change for the next meeting, if, if so be, I think we need to have that discussion. Unless everyone thinks that we should just vote what this says, but I'm not one of them people. I, I have some comments that I'd like to discuss before.
Can we have the discussion on the motion? The a first reading, and that's what it says in our agenda, is a first reading and it's for discussion to, to, to make changes. And then it would come back next, at our next meeting for a final reading. I mean, isn't that the process that we always use?
Yeah, but so we didn't read the actual language of it, but have every expectation that we're going to have a conversation about the contents of it. In other words, we can read it into the record word by word and then say, is there a motion to approve this as the first reading? And that's not something I want to do. I want to have a discussion about one policy compared to the other. So that if there are changes, it will come back for the second reading with those changes in it. So the proper thing to do now is to have a conversation on whether we want to make any changes on this before we accept it and send it for the second reading.
And that's what you would do in a first reading. You would, you would make a motion to approve it and then there would be and then there'd be motions to amend it.
Okay.
I, I, I'm pretty sure that's how we do it.
I just have questions on it. So I don't care how we do it, but I want to have questions on before we approve it, send it off for the next reading.
And, and in the, it, it can be amended, you know, second reading, it can be changed also. That's
Right.
That's the process.
Yeah.
So for the sake of discussion, I move that we approve it as the first.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
Yeah.
Okay.
Bye. Okay. So I think Joe can appreciate this, what I'm going to say. I mean, lawyers, you can find a lawyer to say whatever you want to say and represent whatever needs you say. With all, with that being said, there is quite a big difference between these two policies. And I mean, no disrespect to MASC or to Attorney Joyce about this, but Fred just said himself, one is much shorter than the other, and there's a reason for that. And that's where my concern lies. So while I understand Attorney Joyce's concern that this may, this may provide extra work for our district to to address grievances. I'm a little concerned that this policy that is before us tonight does not go into enough definition of what harassment really is at the different levels. I mean, working in a courthouse, we have people come in every day to file harassment orders. And there's a due process for that. And I'm concerned that this policy that we're looking at tonight basically just says, yes, these are the protected groups and yes, this is who you contact without actually getting into the definition of what each group is. And if you don't really put out some guidelines, this is my opinion, if you don't put out guidelines as to what defines sexual harassment or what defines student to student harassment, we're leaving it up to a court at some point if we can't have an agreement through that grievance process. So I'm wondering if there's a way to combine some of the contents of these two policies and make it one that addresses the concerns of Attorney Joyce, but also gives more detail into what behavior and how we describe things to know that. So we know that when something comes forward, that person had notice of what type of behavior we do not expect. Because this, this shorter policy does not get into the definitions of different harassments. And I think it's important to have it in the policy, the types of behaviors that we consider what harassment is. Because if this goes to a court or a judge or a jury or whatever, somewhere down the line, it's other people deciding if it's harassment or not. And I think we can be more defined in our policy to say what the actual harassment is for those protected classes. So I'm not trying to put more work on the school district by expanding the language of the one Attorney Joyce put forward. Just asking that we put more detail into the policy as to what defines the types of harassments that we're going to protect through these grievance procedures, if that makes sense. So I don't know if this should get sent to program or somebody to have more of a conversation. But in my opinion, I think there's work to be done to combine the two policies to come out with a better one as opposed to being worried about one being shorter and longer than the other and what the content is.
Okay.
And I don't know if there's any feedback to that.
May I, may I respond to that?
Go right ahead, Greg.
Melissa, I think if I sent you, if I sent the committee the extremely extensive grievance procedures that Michael Joyce provided as well. I think those might answer all of those kinds of concerns. I completely understand what you're saying about the definitions. I, you, those are like extremely detailed in those grievance procedures, which will also be published and available and, you know, clearly they'll be on our website. They will be out in the schools. They will be available to parents. I, I think that might, that might, that might address all of that. So for example, there is page after page of definitions that you're looking for. I mean, I could start reading, but I'd have to go on for three pages of, you know, sexual harassment under Title IX. The term sexual harassment includes three types of misconduct based on sex. And it goes literally for three, four or five pages, far, far longer than the M, than the MASC policy. But it's broken out into these very, very detailed procedural documents, which will be shared everywhere. Perhaps if I share those two documents around and you take a look at those, that might address everything that you have for concerns for next week.
So if I may be fun to that, Jonathan, so that's, that's good news, but that's not part of this policy. So I, I welcome seeing those documents, but I guess my question is going to be, so when this policy is posted to the world for, to put those on notice, are those additional documents going to be attached right after it for the world to see? Or is it something somebody has to go digging for? Because that's my concern. The policy is usually the what and any supporting documents are the how. So I understand that we have these documents that say how the grievance process is going to happen. I'm just concerned that the policy does not address what it really is. And that's what's supposed to be in the policy. What is the harassment, not how it's going to be grieved? That's what I've always been trained on policy. So I'm a little concerned about that. That's why I was looking for just the definitions, not necessarily how, how the grievance procedure is going to happen, but what, what is harassment? Our policy does not say what harassment is, yet it's titled a non-discrimination and harassment policy. So I, that's where my concern is.
Kathy, go ahead.
A question, I'm not challenging Melissa at all, but we do have harassment policies and sexual harassment policies. And this policy, I assume, goes in our policy manual along all those topics. So that's, you know, one point, hopefully that it's in a greater context. Second suggestion is maybe referencing back to those policies instead of putting all the definitions in here. Is there a way to reference certain policies that have those definitions so that, you know, you're, you're kind of using, you know, this is the policy, but it refers back to the underlying definition of what this policy is also covering.
And an example could be, like, when I'm reading harassment on what the MASC policy was, it describes, you know, submission of such conduct, it may either be explicitly or implicitly a term of condition of a student's education, blah, blah, blah. I guess what I'm trying to say is I'm wondering if this language is in our bullying policy because it kind of sounds like bullying behavior. And if it is, that's great, then we may not need it in this policy. But I'm just wondering if that kind of work has been done to determine that, that, that these definitions are somewhere in a policy, not a procedure. Like Kathy said, you know, if we have other policies in there, are these defined in policy? Not are they defined in grievance procedure? So I guess I would like that answer before I agree to go on to the second reading. I mean, the second reading to me should include more unless someone can show me that they're already in a policy somewhere, not a procedure somewhere.
Samantha.
I'm just curious procedurally, Melissa, you said something about it going to programs. Is that, I mean, typically how we work through policies like this?
Yeah, I mean, usually subcommittees will deal with policies that, that pertain, like if it was a finance policy, we would send it to BNF. It was, if it was a personnel where it was just involved with staff and go to personnel and usually other ones will go to program if it affects kids and things like that. But yes, subcommittees have reviewed policies in the past. That's usually how they start.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's a process that we put in place. Years ago, we used to have, not have a program subcommittee. We had a policy subcommittee and they dealt with all policies. And then, I don't know, 15 years ago, the school committee made a decision to farm out with the policies to the appropriate subcommittee and then have a program subcommittee in its place. farm out with the policies to the appropriate subcommittee and then have a program subcommittee in its place. So that's, that's some, I mean, some school committees still have policy subcommittee, and that's all they do. So we just do it a little bit differently. Other people do it this, this way too. But, so what I'm hearing, and I don't know what, what people think, I know what Melissa thinks, and we are covered. You know, we met the deadline by passing the MASC policy. So we have time to get this right. So if it's, it's, we have a motion and to accept this as, as the first reading. And like I say, the first reading is not, is, only leads to the second reading, which can come back differently. But if there's, if it's the will of the committee to refer it to the program subcommittee, because I believe this would fall to their, their expertise, then we can do that. We can table this and wait till they come back with a recommendation, and they can, we can look up and see whether there's, these definitions are covered in other policies. I, I tend to think that they are, but I, I can't put my finger on that stuff right this minute. But that being said, let's, let's get it right. So.
Can I, can I ask a question on this? Did Attorney Joyce draft this policy? Or himself, or is it like a best practice in other school districts? Do we know the history on it? And if we don't, that's another good conversation for program to have, if it gets sent there. I'm just wondering how this came about.
My understanding.
I did the legal references, but I don't know who wrote it.
My understanding is that he did, and that he drafted all of the grievance procedures as well. I'm happy to share those with you, have it go to program subcommittee. And if you'd like, I can also reach out to Attorney Joyce, and perhaps he would join us at the subcommittee, and you can hear directly from him.
Okay, so without objection, we'll table this motion and refer it to the program subcommittee for review.
How about that?
Okay. All right, we have another policy. And this one is, we do need to get something in place. So, and that would be the face mask policy. And so it's the face covering policy, file EBCFA. And we need to, this is a first reading once again. And we can have a motion in a second, and then we can discuss issues that we would like to change within it. I, I think that's the process that we should follow. So do we have a motion?
I move, I do. I move that we accept the first reading and file EBCFA, the face covering policy.
Second.
Okay.
Jonathan, before we begin, can I make an, and I wanted to do this under recognitions, but we didn't have recognitions, but it pertains to this policy. The kind and generous people at We Are All in This Together Gloucester have organized a, they have started an initiative to benefit the Gloucester Public Schools elementary students. Their volunteer mask makers will be donating hundreds of masks collectively to distribute to our five local elementary schools for students who have a need. We have funded the cost of materials and time is being donated. They hope to be expanded beyond elementary school if they have the resources. So I just wanted to say that publicly so that the community knows that we have these wonderful, generous people in our community, and that any family who needs, wants, or maybe they just make really cool ones that every kid's going to want, that those resources will be, you know, those supplies will be there for them.
That's, that's great. That's wonderful. And we should send them a thank you letter. Okay, so this is a shot policy, and I'm about to read it. Now that we have a motion and a second, I think it's important that we, the 107 people that are attendees here, hear what, what we're talking about before we start talking about it, okay? So, the face coverings, "The Gloucester Public School District is committed to providing a safe environment as schools reopen during the COVID-19 pandemic. According to public health experts, one of the best ways to stop the spread of the coronavirus and to keep members of our community safe, our school community safe, is the use of face masks or face coverings. Therefore, in accordance with guidance from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and the Massachusetts Department of Public Health, the following requirements are in place until further notice. A face covering that covers the nose and mouth must be worn by all individuals in school buildings, on school grounds, and on school transportation, even when social distancing is observed. Students in grade one and below are exempt from this policy, but are strongly encouraged to wear face coverings when they are on the school grounds or in the school buildings. Whenever possible, students in pre-kindergarten through grade one, who can safely and appropriately wear, remove, and handle masks should do so. All students, including those in grade one and below, must wear face coverings when using school transportation. Individuals may be excused from the requirement for the following list of reasons per the DSE, DSE guidance. The individual has trouble breathing, is unconscious, is incapacitated, cannot remove the mask or face covering without assistance." Excuse me. "In addition, masks or face coverings will not be required for anyone who has a medical, behavioral, or other challenge making unsafe, making it unsafe to wear a face mask or face covering. A written note from a physician is required for the requested exemption. Parents may not excuse their children from the face mask requirement by simply signing a waiver." Simply smart there, by signing a waiver. "Parents are expected to support the school's efforts for safety and health by having their children wear masks. Exceptions to this policy, under certain circumstances, such as for students with medical, behavioral, or other challenges who are unable to wear masks, must be approved by the building principal in consultation with the school nurse and the local board of health. Face shields or physical barriers may provide an alternative in some instances. A student's mask or face covering is to be provided by the student's family. Staff members are responsible for providing their own face covering. However, the district will supply disposable face coverings for individuals who arrive at the building or school, or board school transportation without one. If students are in violation of this policy, the building principal will consult with the parents and guardians and superintendent to determine whether an exception is appropriate. Or the student may be removed from the school building for in-person learning until such time as the student can comply with the requirement for the required, or the requirement is lifted. Violations of this policy by staff will be handed in the same manner as other violations of school committee policy and school rules. Visitors in violation of this policy will be denied entry into the school district facility. This policy will remain in effect until rescinded by the school committee." And then there's some legal references. So there's a motion and a second, that's what we're talking about to all the people listening, and I'll open it up for discussion. Laura.
Thanks, Jonathan. So I feel very strongly that we need to require all students in the buildings to have, to wear masks. I would love to have a medical person here to talk about this, but it doesn't, it doesn't fully make sense to me that we're, at least in the elementary school, is going to have two grades walking around without masks. When as far as the research that, that I've read is concerned, you know, we, we don't really understand very much about how children transmit the disease, but we certainly know they carry it. So, and there are plenty of places here in Gloucester. I know Camp Spindrift, the kids are all wearing masks. I mean, there are children wearing masks. And as far, my understanding is the CDC's requirement is from age, above age two, the WHO requirement is age five and up. So I'm just, I, I feel strongly that we should be requiring masks for all elementary grades, including K and one.
Joel.
I would support Laura if she wanted to make such an amendment. You know, every child is different, but, you know, I have an incoming kindergartner who's been at Camp Spindrift this summer, and he wears a mask except when he's eating or swimming. And, you know, when I talked to the counselors there, they said they really don't have much, much difficulty making sure that even his group of similarly aged campers keep their mask on, you know, pretty much religiously. And so I'd be, you know, in favor of Laura wanting to put that amendment forward. I think it'd be, you know, a good move.
Anybody, Melissa?
I can say that I share the same concern, but I don't want to amend anything until I hear from other organizations on how it works. Like, for instance, Pathways probably deals with this issue on a regular basis, more so than Camp Spinder. I am concerned that, not that I don't agree with the philosophy, because in, in the best world, everybody's wearing masks. There's no, I'm not challenging that, but I'm challenging, you know, what type of extra support are we going to have to put in classrooms to deal with younger kids keeping masks on all day if they're not used to it? I mean, one child might be used to it where other children aren't. And so now we're going to be asking teachers to make sure their masks are on, which in itself could create a problem in negotiations, because that is a change of working conditions. So I just think that I need to hear more. Not that I don't support that type of request, but I'd like to hear how it's working in daycares and other agencies that are, that are dealing with younger kids that age wearing masks. Because I think in some circumstances, it's going to work for a child, and some that it's not. And I don't think we should be refusing kids who aren't comfortable wearing a mask yet. So I think there's more to explore before I would feel comfortable mandating that requirement for younger kids, especially knowing Desi, who works with a lot of organizations, has determined that preschool through one shouldn't have to. So I, I need to know more.
Jonathan, you're muted.
There I am. Samantha, go ahead.
I feel similarly to Laura and Joel, that I think it's really important that we make an amendment such as this. And I think it's especially important because it seems as though some of our bigger classes, as one of the pictures showed, was at Beeman. That was, I think, a first grade class, and that was, I think, three foot distancing. And correct me if I'm wrong, but I, you know, I wonder what we do in that situation if kids are not mandated to wear cla, to wear masks and they're, you know, there's 18 kids in a class, three foot distance away. I'm not sure how we navigate this. If some classes are only having nine kids at first grade, some kids are only having, have 18, there's an equity issue there. And I think really the only way to, to deal with that is to mandate mask wearing, because it doesn't seem like we have the space to get six feet distance between some of these kids in some of our buildings. So it seems like this is the only option.
Anybody else?
Joel has it handled.
Joel, go ahead.
Thank you. So just, you know, to kind of discuss further with Melissa, so I appreciate, you know, I'm not an early childhood education specialist. I'm not a child psychologist. Again, I admit that all of my, the information I bring from the outside is all anecdotal. But one thing I do want to push back on is if you are, so the only grades being affected by this change would be, you know, pre-K, kindergarten, and first grade. So even if you're the oldest group, the first graders, you don't really know what normal is. You went to school for two-thirds of a year and then got pulled out in March. If you're a kindergartner, you don't have any expectations. So this isn't going to be, you know, no one is used to wearing a mask until they start wearing it. And these children are about to be, you know, immersed in a bunch of things they're not used to. And I don't, I don't know if this would be, it looks to us weird, because we know what kindergarten's supposed to look like. And kindergarten's going to look weird this year, and if they're all sitting there with masks on, it's going to look even weirder. I don't know that to them, you know, I would imagine things like, you know, raising your hand before you speak is going to be a harder challenge for your average kindergartner or first grader than putting a mask on and leaving it there. I, I could be wrong, but I don't think they have any normal baseline yet, you know. It's, it's going to be harder for a seventh grader to get into a mask habit than maybe a kindergartner who has no habits to break.
Melissa?
So I'm going to ask that we get a legal opinion on this, because you have Desi saying that it's not required. And if we're going to make it stricter, I would just want to hear what the consequences are, because in our policy, it says if they don't wear masks, they can't come in the building. So how many young kids are going to not be coming into the building now because of that? And what's going to happen during the day when they refuse to wear it? I mean, I took two sixth graders shopping yesterday, and they required to wear their masks all day. And trust me, there was times when it was challenging. So I can't even imagine what, having that expectation of that younger group. And like I said, not that I don't want them to, because in a perfect world, they should be wearing them. But I'm worried about the kids that won't keep pulling at them, and what their requirement is going to be on the teacher or the staff to, to fix that. I mean, some kids are going to come to school prepared and used to it, but I would bet that there's many that aren't. So who's training our children to wear masks all day? Because I can tell you, the teachers are going to say that's not their responsibility. So I think we're going to have some concerns there. I think our policy says that they should wear them if they can, but mandating it is a different requirement. So I'd want a legal opinion on that, because if you have a parent that comes in and says, Desi says, I don't have to have my child with a mask, and now we're saying you do, I think that could be a problem. So like I said, in a perfect world, it will be great, and I'd like to be able to support that. But I think we need some more information before we mandate it.
Okay, well.
Jonathan, can I? So Melissa, just, here's a list of a few districts that have already mandated this, just so you know. Newton, Cohasset, Hingham, Natick, Medfield, Monomoy, Hamilton, Wenham. Grafton recommended it. I don't know what their final vote was. Belcher Town was in their draft. Medfield, it was in their draft. So we're not out on a limb here. I just want to make sure you know that, like, there's plenty of districts that are making these changes. And I think the question of enforcement is a question throughout the district. I mean, how are we going to enforce the high schooler who takes off his mask because he doesn't want to go to school? Like, I mean, I think enforcement is a real question throughout the district of how we enforce mask mandates. But I do want to say, like, nobody was used to wearing masks four months ago. And this is a public health issue, right? We're putting a lot of kids into a building. And the most effective thing we know that prevents transmission of this virus is masks. Like, that's, that's the best we've got. And so I just think, you know, I understand kids don't, sometimes don't want to, they don't like it, you know. There's lots of things we don't like right now, but we, the question on that is enforcement, and, you know, and that's, that's, that isn't, that's an issue. I don't know the answer to that issue, but I would just put it in that frame.
Melissa?
It takes some time to think about it, because if you're going to mandate something, but you don't know how you're going to enforce it, that's a problem. And they're all going to be looking at the superintendent, teachers are going to be saying, the kids aren't wearing the masks all day, or they're taking them off, or they're pulling at them. Because even if it says here, if you have trouble breathing, you're going to have little kids that, I mean, we're talking about five, six, seven-year-olds. We're not talking about high school kids where you can say you have to leave. We're talking about young little kids, a lot of them in a room. You're going to need someone in there just to enforce it all day long, minus having a teacher. So before we mandate it, we better know what the consequences are of mandating it. And you yourself said you didn't know how we're going to fix. And you yourself said you didn't know how we're going to fix it. So maybe we need to come back and, and talk about this more after the mechanics have ever been worked out, but I am very reluctant, even though I want to mandate this, trust me, because I believe masks is the solution. But you're creating a whole nother level of request to the GTA or the GATE to do more responsibility, and you yourself said you don't know how it's going to work. So I am somebody who is not going to mandate it and then figure it out after, especially when you're going to be refusing little kids coming into a building now because they can't or won't wear a mask. So I have concerns all over the place with this topic of conversation. But at the same time, Laura, I do agree, masks should be worn if they can, so.
Patty Wegman has her hand up, do, we want to allow her to weigh in during deliberations? Okay, Patty, please go ahead.
Thank you, Jonathan. I just want to, would like to add to that policy, the consultation with the Director of Special Education, because we do have some students that are older than second grade, all the way up to our 22-year-olds who are not able to wear masks. So I think that there are some unique learners that we need to consider who will not be able to wear masks, and any consultation with the, with my department would be helpful.
Thank you. Samantha?
Patty, that's super helpful. Thank you for the reminder. So Ben, just to clarify, again, back to the, the distancing. So if, if kids are going to eat and they take off, everybody has their mask off, they have to be six foot. For this age group that's not required to wear masks, it's still three to six feet? Sorry, you're, you're muted.
That, that came up a while ago, the superintendents had the same question, asked Commissioner Riley very directly on that one, and that's what he said, you know, that even, you know, and, even though they are not, would not be masked, that the same distancing is in effect.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I, I think it would be irresponsible for us as a, as a committee to not really consider that. I mean, we've, I don't really know what the alternative is here. I mean, if we have classrooms that are three foot, three feet apart, and we're saying that we're concerned about that, and those same classrooms, you know, are not required to wear masks, again, I don't really know how we work around that. I mean, I think that is a huge concern, and it's going to be a huge concern for teachers, and it's going to be a huge concern for parents.
Kathy?
I also would like to know why, you know, where, what the source of recommendation is, because maybe it's at a certain age, the way you take off a mask and the way you put it on keeps it cleaner, right? We know that there's certain ways to not only wear it, but the way to put it on and take it off, and when to take it off. And so, so that's one of my questions. I, I do think that our children will rise to the occasion. I see more little kids with masks on, so I think this idea that kids will come in and be rebellious about it, I, I'm not sure that that's, I, I think, I think we'll be able to get everybody comfortable doing it if it's the expectation. And Laura, correct me if I'm wrong, did you say preschool through one? Or were you saying K and one in the elementary grades?
I'm speaking specifically about K through one, but I would love, you know, I would love advice or to hear from others about pre-K. And what, I know that the regulations have not required it in pre-K thus far, but I also think those regulations have, you know, very small numbers of children in a, in a daycare setting. So I'd love to hear some professionals on that one.
Joel?
I was just having a thought, and I frankly don't know if we're able to do this because of the structure of the negotiations that we're in, but, you know, one of Melissa's concerns, which is a valid concern, is if we were to amend this, would we be, you know, would the, the teachers and the paraprofessionals feel like we were, you know, thrusting upon them an increased workload beyond what Desi, you know, was recommending? And would that be problematic in already kind of contentious negotiations? On the flip side, you know, and if, if you were able to at the next negotiation, or one of the next negotiations, you know, kind of pose that question, because for all we know, there might be, you know, the teachers might say, "Hey, if you're going to have 18 kindergartners three feet from each other, please at least put them in a mask." I'm happy to keep reminding them to keep a mask on, because I already don't really want to be in this room with all these kids to begin with. I definitely don't want to be in this room with these kids with no masks on. So, you know, I think it could go either, I think I take Melissa's point, you know, to heart. It's a very, you know, valid concern. But I don't know if that's the way the GTA will actually feel about it. They may appreciate that we're, you know, providing them an extra level of safety. I genuinely don't know. It'd be great if the negotiating team felt it appropriate to pose that question and kind of get some collaboration from the stakeholders before we make this decision at the next reading.
Kathy?
And just to follow up, I would love to hear from some parents of kids that age, because I think if I were a parent, and I was the type that had my child with a mask on in those, in all appropriate, you know, all required settings, you know, and obviously letting them not have it on and giving them those opportunities for play and being outdoors and all that stuff. But when you bring them somewhere, you know, you put the mask on when, you know, that's, that's certainly a lesson. So I would love to hear from those parents, because they may also want other parents to make sure their children are comfortable and, and good about doing it.
Samantha?
Just in relation to being a parent of a five-year-old and a two-year-old, my two-year-old reminds me now about what, where she needs to wear a mask, and as soon as she walks outside, she pulls it down over her chin. Of course, it's not for huge, long periods of time, and we're going to have outliers of kids who are going to really struggle with this, but we have lots of outliers of kids who are going to struggle sitting in a seat as well for four hours. So I think, just from my experience and knowing my cohort of friends, we've been teaching our kids all summer that this is the expectation. No matter where we go, we wear a mask if we are in a store, if we are in a group, this is what we do. And I think, you know, I would assume that that's the case for a lot of families right now, that kids are, are used to this, and it's the new normal, and it won't be forever, and we will all rejoice when it's over. But for community safety, you know, this is what we really need to encourage. And, and I do, I'm heartened to see lots of kids wearing them. They're not always wearing them correctly, but it's, it's something that we just have to keep reinforcing with everything that we have to do with five and six-year-olds and two-year-olds. So, I mean, I've had really positive experiences with my, my kids and my friends' kids in masks.
Mayor Taken?
Thank you very much. First of all, let me go back, because I kept raising my hand, and I don't show my face so this way, because that's why it's called participants in chat room, and people I keep saying once when I look in, the little hands raised. As far as the ways to being tested, it's going to be tested weekly, it's going to be reported weekly like it would with the COVID. The graphs are going to be different, they're going to work on that. As far as the library after-school programs, we're working with the library, working with, YMCA's been calling for a long time. They are, they've been doing after-school programs with us for years, are familiar with the classrooms, familiar with the sizes, regulations, because of Camp Spindrift. Now, as far as childcare right now, there's childcare, daycare, and everything else, where they wear masks, where they're mandatory to wear masks. But we're not talking about every child here, we're talking about special needs. Just the same thing, like, you cannot force a child who cannot take the flu shot. What are you going to say, you're not going to come to school? Or if you have a doctor, as you go through the protocol, you go through the procedures, then they're still allowed into school. You cannot say to someone who can legally cannot wear a mask, per order of the doctor or physical, cannot wear a mask, that you have to wear a mask. You're, you're opening it up for, never mind, you know, harassment, but a lawsuit. So Patty was right, we work with her, we work with the plans, we're going to go back and forth, back and forth, "I have a child, I don't have a child, I have this." The teachers are saying, you know, they prefer six feet, some classes could do the six feet. We said the same thing, and Melissa was right with the restaurants. I laughed. I'm a big person. And you know what, when I sit, my chair's right on top of yours when I'm in a restaurant, it's not three feet, it's on top of you, back to back. So you know what, we really need to look at the protocols of what the, is it the front desk, the back desk, the chairs, that we need to sit there and look. Maybe we can, you know, check that out. But I really would like to know from Patty. I know we're integrating some of the special needs, maybe she already knows how many students or whatever cannot wear masks, maybe the parents already reached out to her. Let's work with her and find out exactly what room they're going to be in or whatever, and maybe we can figure out how we're going to social distance that, not to put them away, because you don't want to put anyone, you want to put them with the peers or what we can do. We're looking at also masks that, you know, instead of the mask for that child, because sometimes it depends what kind of a disability they have. On wearing that mask might even cause more, because the screaming, the hollering, the tantrum, the spitting, or whatever, to take off the mask because they can't breathe. So we'll have to work on that one. I, I'm not going to vote on tonight whether you're going to mandate a mask or whatever. Some of the other schools that you did mention, Laura, they do have little clauses in it. They do have the clauses as far as, you know, a doctor's note, et cetera. So I thank Patty for actually suggesting working with her, that's really good. We're working on all the other programs that need to be worked on. But I am just saying that right now, we're taking more time on this when we have expertise that want to work with us. So Kathy was right, let's talk to some of the parents who have special needs and figure out, have they been wearing masks at home? Are they practicing wearing masks, is there a reason? I'm sure they reached out to Patty. Patty, right here, is a professional on this that will know of what children can and cannot. We're not talking about everyday, I agree with you, Laura, masks are very important, they're already working with it. I've seen some kids on the beach with them, they have the rubber ones, it's like scuba diver mask, you know, they, they, they're already like, like you said, you can teach a, a two-year-old to speak a different language. You're going to be able to, you teach them how to wear masks, it's going to be the new norms for them, but I'm worried more about just the special need ones, not the everyday children, not the, someone that might not because of whatever they have. Thank you.
Thank you. Melissa?
So I was just reading through the proposals to see if there was anything from the GTA in there about masks, because I just want to make my position really clear. If we can have everyone wear masks, I want everyone to wear masks. To me, that's not, not, but there's not enough information, I think, tonight to make that decision. I think I need to hear from the teachers if they'd prefer everyone to wear masks, and if they said yes, I'd be the first one to say okay. I mean, I'm, I'm not going to lie, I don't, I don't have experience with younger children on a day-to-day basis to see how they do with masks, so that's, that's something that I can't relate to, and that's my struggle here. So I'm depending on listening to Samantha and Laura and Joel, who do have very young kids, because the one little boy in my life that I know would, would, it would be a little bit of a struggle to wear a mask. So I, I guess I just can't relate to younger kids wearing them. But I would like to get there if that's what teachers want, and if that's what parents want. So I can vote either way on this, but I am concerned of a legal challenge. I would like to see the policies of other school districts that did mandate this and what their out clauses were, because to me, there needs to be more language in this policy other than just adding them, that, those grades to the all masks. So there's a little bit of work that needs to be done here from parents, here from teachers, to get me on board. And if I vote no for any reason tonight, it's not that I don't want them to wear the mask, I just don't know that we're prepared to move forward with that type of mandate. But I clearly believe that masks are the best protection for all, at all ages, if it can work.
Samantha?
I just want to respond to what the mayor said, because I don't, just to clarify, no, I don't think we are advocating at all that we would dispute anybody with a, with a disability, or documented disability or health issue, to not wear a mask. This is in relation to Desi not requiring masks in pre-K through one for the entire population. So, you know, that to me, I think, is a very important distinction. I don't want the community to think that kids who truly have a documented medical issue or behavioral issue, absolutely, that those are absolutely conversations that we should be having with, with Patty, or that the school should be having with Patty, and parents should be having with Patty. But this is strictly for the, the entire population as a whole, and there's absolutely going to be those kiddos that, that can't. And, and that needs to, there needs to be room for that. But just to clarify, because I think it's a very important distinction.
Thank you.
Okay.
Kathy?
So I'm going to switch away from students for a second, and according to this policy, it says that the mask must be worn by all individuals in school buildings, on school grounds, and on school transportation. So I'm wondering how it's going so far with teachers and other staff in the buildings right now? And are they, I, they're expected to have them on? I assume if somebody is probably in their classroom by themselves, it's fine for them not to, health-wise. But if they're working with other people, even if they're in the same room, I'm expecting that they keep their mask on. Is that, is, that is the intent and the language in the policy, is that correct, Ben?
That is the intent. Yes. I mean, in terms of this week, just like I am not masked right now in my office when I'm by myself, you know, teachers, I, some, I, you know, and just to be accurate here, on their own, in their rooms, you know, a very large classroom, folks have not always worn masks. I, I think that's okay for now, you know, in, because it's comparable to an office environment at this point. In the school, in the school year, I think we expect it otherwise.
Laura?
So I have a procedural question here, right? We're two weeks from today, school begins. So I, I totally hear what Melissa's saying, that she wants more information. I have some of those policies I could send you, but I totally get what you're saying about needing more information about the specifics. But proceed, I mean, how much time do we have to do this? Like, you know, we have a meeting in a week. I mean, if we want to get legal opinions and parents, and I want to think really realistically about, you know, how we get this done to our satisfaction within the timeframe it needs to be done. And second.
Just, just, I mean, we need to have this policy in place when the kids arrive in school.
Right.
I, I don't think there's any doubt about that. The kids arrive in school two weeks from today.
So we need this policy complete by next week.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Yes.
So how do we do that with these amendments? And the second.
Well, there's, there's a couple of ways. Just, first of all, you could, you could offer an amendment tonight, and we could vote on the amendment, and then we could vote on the first reading as amended, and then we could vote on a second reading next week. All right, we could, we could table it, and next week waive the first reading and go directly to the second reading and amend that. So I mean, there's, there's two ways we can get it done by the end of next week. And, and it's just a question of how the committee wants to, wants to proceed.
Okay, but I have a second part of my question. So another piece of this policy that isn't addressed in what we have is what kinds of face coverings are acceptable? And what other districts have done is worked with their boards of health to come up with a list. And we don't, we don't have anything like that. So I'd like, I mean, I think we should, I think we should have some, some requirements of what, of what is acceptable face covering for students to wear. So Ben, wants to say something?
Can I, can I respond to that?
Go ahead, Ben.
So in communication with Karen and Carol about that, that's what I expect them to do. You know, there's obviously, because of a media report, some concern about gators is one. At the same time, we also know that a lot of kids like to wear those, and they wear them effectively. But I, but so, yeah, so we're working with them. I guess, I'm not clear on this, but I would suggest that that doesn't necessarily have to be in the policy unless you want it to be in the policy. Karen and Carol will be at our meeting next week, probably because of this, but also other updates as well. So she, and she's, I think she'll be expecting to get questions about masks. I'll make sure she's prepared for that. But I think, I think just, it's, we can do that as a procedure, you know, but we would, I'm happy to share that with you so you see it, whether it's part of the policy or not, it's really up to, up to you folks. I, I don't have a preference, honestly.
Melissa?
So a couple of things. So first, Ben, I don't know if you're able to do this, but Desi came up with this regulation for some reason, and I don't know if it's a talk amongst the superintendents. I know you can tap into that superintendent world to find out information. Maybe find out how Desi came to the determination that preschool K and one don't have to wear masks, because I'd be curious what outreach they did to public health agencies to make that determination. But also too, I just want to let the committee know, I'm prepared. But also too, I just want to let the committee know, I'm prepared tonight to say I'm okay with this amendment, knowing that we're going to get a second reading next week after we have the chance to talk to Karen Carroll, and just knowing that if there's ever a concern with this policy, I would hope you, the committee would be willing to entertain a revisit to a policy that mandates the younger kids to wear them, if it's not working or if it's creating problems within the school. Because I don't want to, I don't want my messaging to be that I don't want masks, because I do. So I'm willing to support the amendment tonight made by Laura, as long as we continue the conversation and work through the process and get more information before we finalize it.
Joel.
Two unrelated points. The first one is to push back on what Ben said. I know Ben didn't know me when I was in middle school or high school, but some of the teachers who were on tonight probably did, and if the policy just said a face covering that covers the nose and mouth, I can almost promise you I'd show up with a cardboard or something and defy you to suspend me. Like, I'm just, I think that it's absolutely the right instinct to explain what that means before someone like me at age 15 causes unnecessary trouble for an already difficult year. Separately, based on what Patty said, I'm going to offer an amendment that is to the one, two, I would call it the fourth paragraph on page one, the sentence that said, "A written note from a physician is required for requested exemption." I move that we amend that sentence to say, "A written note from a physician or from," you know, what's Patty's official title? I'm so sorry, Patty. But either a written note from a physician or Patty's department that, you know...
Special Ed Director.
Special Ed Director.
Sorry, Patty, that was very simple. I should have known that off the top of my head. Sure, so I would, I would amend that we say, "A written note from a physician or the Special Ed Director is required for requested exemption," because the exemption already takes into effect medical or behavioral or other challenges. So I think we just add her as a person who wrote a note, and that would fix the problem she was talking about.
Okay, I just, just for procedurally, I don't believe that we have an amendment. Laura opened up this conversation, saying she'd like to amend that, but I don't think we...
Right.
...made a motion and/or, or has it seconded? So I completely agree with your amendment, Joel, but I think we need to start with Laura's amendment.
Laura doesn't have one.
I have one, I can have one now.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Why don't we move this...
Well, now you're cutting a line, Laura.
Wait, but Joel just made a motion to amend.
Yeah, he, okay.
Okay.
All right, so we can do that, that one's, that one's easy. Let's do that one first.
Second, I'll second Joel's amendment.
Okay, so the, just to be clear, the, the amendment would be to add Director of Special Education after, I'm just trying to find the spot here, by where it says, by a doctor's...
A written note from a physician.
A written note from a physician. Or the Director of Special Education, correct? That's, that's your amendment?
Yes.
Okay, so that's been moved and seconded. Kathy.
I just think it might be more appropriate in the next paragraph where it says, "Exception to this policy under certain circumstances for students with medical behavior or other challenges must be approved by the building principal in consultation with the school nurse or local board of health or director of special education." That might be where the exception should be. So I don't really care where it goes, but it just might read that that would be part of the exceptions.
So that's, Joel, go ahead.
So I, again, not to like over-lawyer this, unless I check my notes on this, but I read that paragraph that Kathy brought up to say that when the physician, when you, when a student comes in with one of these notes, then the exception has to be approved by the building principal in consultation with the school nurse or local board of health. It seemed that otherwise, these two paragraphs need to be kind of rewritten together. And so that, that, if that was the intent for it to be a physician or the board of health or the school nurse or the principal, and then we'd add Special Education Director, then I think we should probably kind of retool those offline and give those paragraphs a little more cohesive, because I read this to me, and a student comes in, says, "Here's my, my requested waiver, here's my physician's note," and then the school principal has to take that and go, "Okay, yes, I approve this exemption." If that's not the correct way it's supposed to be read, you know, then we might need to retool it.
Anyone else? Melissa.
I agree with Joel on the placement, but raising my hand, because before we discuss this any further, I want to ask Patty if this is something that she wants, because this is putting her on the hot seat with some parents, potentially, and I just, before educational advocates and everyone else gets hired to challenge any decision she may make, if a parent doesn't agree with it, I just want to make sure that she's willing to take this responsibility on before we add her position to be one of the people to be able to apply a waiver. So I think we need to hear from Patty before we make any decision on this amendment.
Okay. Patty, would you like to weigh in on this?
Sure, thanks, Melissa. I think what I was trying to alleviate was the fact that there are going to be parents that are not going to be able to get to a physician to get a note, and there are some of our older students in our life skills programs who will likely not be able to get a note from a doctor, but we know that they will not be able to tolerate wearing a mask. We may be able to get them to wear a shield, but they won't be able to wear a mask. And yes, Melissa, I appreciate the sensitivity to the fact that I might have a number of parents, you know, knocking on my door, saying my child can't wear a mask. So I think it has to be dealt with on a case-by-case situation, and, you know, the, my worry is about those students with significant needs and are high-needs learners that will not be able to wear a mask.
Yeah.
Yeah, are you okay with what we're proposing?
I think, I think she said she understood what was...
Okay.
So is there any further discussion on the amendment offered by Joel of adding Director of Special Ed after physician on paragraph four? Maria, could we have a roll call vote?
Chairman Pope.
Yes.
Ms. Prince.
Yeah.
Mayor Taken.
Yes.
Ms. Watson.
Yes.
Ms. Weason.
Yes.
Kathy Clancy.
Yes.
And Mr. Favazza.
Yes.
It passes unanimously now. Laura, would you like to make an amendment to the first reading?
Sure. So as, it's a little, so in the second paragraph, I would alter it to read, "A face covering that covers the nose and mouth must be worn by all individuals in school buildings, on school grounds, and on school transportation, even when social distancing is observed." This includes all students, grades K through 12. Whenever possible, then get rid of the next line, then whenever possible, students in pre-kindergarten, who can safely and appropriately wear, remove, and handle masks should do so. And then it can continue, all students include, all students must wear face coverings when using school transportation.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Joel. Discussion. We've already had most of it, but Melissa?
I just want to be clear that if, I mean, I'm going to support this motion, but just there needs to be eyes on this, and it be brought back if we have parents outreach or teachers for some reason don't think that's appropriate, which I'm sure that won't happen, but I just want to make sure that we know that this could be revisited.
Yeah, I think it'd be great if we could, you know, obviously, I hope parents who are watching or hear about this will, you know, reach out via email, like they have in a lot of subjects in the meantime, and I would like if the negotiating team could, whether it's formally or informally, kind of, you know, get some feedback from the GTA as to whether this is something they feel is beneficial to their, their members and not overly burdens.
Okay. Laura.
And, you know, I'm wondering also if we, you know, if we could hear from Pathways, it would be useful to hear, I mean, Pathways is the preschool, so I'd also like to just hear from them as we go into the second reading, to understand, you know, what their experience has been with the younger grades as well.
Anybody else? I'd just like to say that this policy sets expectations that these students would, all students would wear masks. What it says is that it's not required, but it's expected of pre-K and K and 1. And, but the only real difference between that is that there are actually a number of punitive measures that can be taken if students don't follow those rules. And I have some concerns about that piece of it with kindergartens, you know, and basically, what's it saying? If, if, if kids don't follow these rules, then they will be subject to eventually being not allowed in school. And I'm not sure that's where we want to go, but for, for the, for the sake of moving it forward, I'm going to support this, but I just, and I think that we should get some more information as we go forward to next week, but I do have some serious concerns about the punitive measures that are in this policy for older kids being applied to pre-K and kindergarten kids who, you know, may not be able to keep the mask on all day. I also believe that many of these, most of the kids will do it. I mean, I, I don't have little kids at this point in my life, but I spend enough time to know that it's a lot easier to get kindergarten kids to walk in a line than it is high school kids, so, anyway.
Just, I totally agree with you, Jonathan. I mean, there's, I think this is when teacher's judgment is really important, because oftentimes teachers will build in sort of movement breaks for particular kids, right? You know, walk to the bubbler, take a walk around the building, just to help support them if they just struggle sitting normally in a classroom. So I would assume that those kind of adjustments are going to have to be made with teacher's judgment for particular kids, and I agree that I don't think there should necessarily be punitive actions for younger, for younger students, just more conversation with teachers than how to support kids individually. I think that's just going to be the case overall here. I mean, we're, we're going to be dealing with young kids not knowing how to socially distance, right? I'm assuming there's not going to be a punitive action when a kid gets one foot away from, from a peer. I think we have to trust that, that teachers in a lot of ways are equipped to support kids' individual needs and talk to parents to figure out what works best. And I don't, I agree that we need to really think through that language, the punitive language. But again, I think every kid is going to be different here, and we might need to adjust accordingly.
Jonathan, you bring up a really good point, and I, I do think, I'll think about that punitive language and possibly having exceptions to the punitive, and I know you'd say, "Oh, why would you require it?" But then not have consequences, but I think the consequences, depending on age group, should be age group appropriate, so I'll be thinking a lot about that between now and next meeting.
Sophia.
Yeah, I'm going to support this for tonight for second reading, for the next one, and we'll have time to talk to Karen Carroll, talk to Pathways, and get some more information sort of this way, and then I'll talk to the other mayors to figure out, because we meet weekly anyways, to figure out what's going on, because we're discussing this. As far as the, it's funny, because you know what? No one knows what the hell they're doing. Isn't this really wonderful? We're talking to DC, we're talking to Ron Conaty from the Board of Health, and all a lot of the people, a lot of the Board of Health themselves are asking, "Okay, so do you wear the gators or you not? What kind? How do you do it? What should we do? Is shields okay? That's better than nothing?" And it, it's so confusing, it really is, and it was just, like we're saying, we, it's just thrown out again, like we're starting from day one. You know, it's like what happened in March. Do we close school? Do we open school? Do you do this? It's like thrown out to all of us to make our own decisions of what we can do with the best for our community, and that's what we have to look at. So I'm glad we're having this conversation, and I'm glad we're having conversations with the teachers, because that's what we have to do. We have to make decisions, and technically, we really, you know, it's not about the other schools. Everyone's different, everyone, green, red, it doesn't matter. It's about what our teachers are saying, what we need to do, what Pathway is, what we do here, what our students, our students. And so I'm glad that we're going to be having this discussion and working through this, because it's our students. I don't care what's happening across the bridge, because they're all having the same problems, and it's, like they said, if they say to us, to the mayors and the managers, "It's your community, you need to know what your community, what it needs." So I'm glad we're having this conversation, and I'm looking forward to getting all the results for next week. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on the, on the amendment? Maria, could we get a roll call vote?
Chairman Pope.
Yes.
Ms. Prince.
Yeah.
Mayor Taken.
Yes.
Ms. Watson.
Yes.
Ms. Weason.
Yes.
Kathy Clancy.
Yes.
And Mr. Favazza.
Yes.
Okay. It passes unanimously. Now, we'll go back to the original motion to accept this is, this, I don't have it in front anymore, policy, E, B, C, F, A, to accept it as the first reading as amended. It's, Joel.
So I just want to make sure I have it on the record that I'm going to vote in favor of this with the expectation that between now and the next reading, we'll get some guidance from Karen Carroll, and we'll be able to amend at the second reading of what qualifies for face covering, absent which I would not vote a second time in favor.
Okay.
I just responded to that.
Sure.
I just want to be clear on Mr. Favazza, I'm not surprised that, about how he characterized himself as a middle school student, okay? But also, in addition to that, absolutely, in terms of getting that, I wasn't sure if we would, we would include it in the, in the, in the policy or as a procedure, you know, but, but happy to include that in the policy, and we'll get that to you for next week.
Can I ask a question to Ben on that? Is there, where is the guideline that says what a mask or face covering is and what it's not? Because it seems to me we should be referencing that, because I know it changes daily. I know there was a conversation going on about how a certain mask is told not to use, but then they found out that it could be used. I mean, is there a, a regulation on what constitutes a mask versus a gator or versus whatever, that we could add language to the policy on that?
Yeah, no...
You know, just to say a regulated mask or a mask that meets the, some, somebody's requirement is what has to be, or face covering, I should say, is the face covering policy.
Yeah, um, excuse me, so, um, yes, there is, I think there is, but I want to defer to Karen Carroll on that, because I don't know, the two, the two types of face coverings that come into question right now are ones, so the so-called gator, and then also the ones that events. Those are, and the reason they're of concern in the, in the public now is because there've been some media reports on them and that sort of thing. So, but I'll have Karen speak to us very clearly, and before that, we'll get very clear guidance on what's acceptable. You know, part of this also comes down to the number of layers as well, you know, so, and, and there's also about type of fabric, but anyway, I'll let her chime in on that, but we'll do that ahead of time, so you'll have something to look at in writing.
Joel.
Here's a suggestion. I would, I think we can fix this tonight, actually, because Melissa made a really good point, because it's fluid, right? So I would just move that we amend the first sentence of the second paragraph to say, "A face covering that covers the nose and mouth," and then insert new language, which would be, "and which complies with," you know... and which complies with, you know, guidance or requirements set forth by the City of Gloucester Board of Health as amended from time to time, and then resume the sentence must be worn by all individuals. And that way, this policy can stay static, and as guidelines change, the Board of Health or the Health Director, whichever one you want to choose, can say, oh, you know, turns out these masks aren't safe, they're off the list, and then our policy doesn't need to change. Turns out these masks are safe, they're on the list, our policy doesn't need to change.
We can either do it tonight or next week, but just keep track of that, because I think that's a great idea. Maybe after we hear from Karen, maybe she can give us more.
Okay, so I'll pull that. I withdraw that amendment, and I'll, I'll reissue it next meeting.
Yeah.
So what we have right now is a motion in, in a second to accept the first reading of policy E B C F A for the first reading as amended. Is there any further discussion? Could we get a roll call vote, Maria?
Chairman Pope?
Yes.
Ms. Prince?
Yeah.
Mayor Taken?
Yes.
Ms. Watson?
Yeah.
Ms. Wiesen?
Yes.
Kathy Clancy?
Yes.
And Mr. Favaza?
Yes.
It passes unanimously. Thank you very much, and I look forward to the final version next week, which I won't be what we got right now.
Laura, could you, could you, maybe Maria got it, but the language on your amendment, Maria, did you get that?
I can, I got some of it, but I was actually going to go back and listen to, to it to make sure I got it right. Do you want me to?
If you can, if you can email it, that'd be great. So I want to go on, thank you.
And Jonathan?
It's recorded, yes.
And just for clearance, can we, yes, because you're asking a lot on the Board of Health. You're asking to go against what the regulations are and what the recommendations are, because all the stuff that you have on, we have tonight is on the website. It's on mask.gov, you go into mask, you go into, you know, whatever, the, the recent one is 731. Everything that we have tonight, the same thing, clots must be used under the age of two, et cetera, et cetera. Can you please, Ben, explain to Karen, because I've been texting with them too, exactly what you expect from her next week? Because I don't want to be another 1:30 meeting or come at the last minute where she can't answer these questions, so she can do and look and talk to other Board of Health Directors and get some input from other people. So can we put down exactly what we expect from her and what we want from her, please? Because, I mean, all the guidelines are here, and we're not following the guidelines from the state. So we want to make our own guidelines. So in order to do that, we need some kind of referrals that you'd like, because all the guidelines that right now that I just pulled up for masks, face coverings, what should be done under the age of two, not under the age of eight, how to put them up, air loops, the whole thing, has been on, and they just updated again, and they keep updating it. And I mean, it's all out there, but we don't want to follow that. So we need to ask her what we're looking for and what we really think. I mean, because I don't want to see us coming next week where she'll say, okay, face coverings, and then you'll say, well, what are face coverings? Is it a codboard or what kind of face covering? Is it a scuba diver or whatever? Ask her exactly what kind of gaiters, what thickness, like someone said, two-layer mask, three-layer mask, surgical mask, day mask. If we're, I mean, we're going to supply, if someone doesn't bring it in, we're going to supply with a regular, are we supplying with a regular surgical mask? So what are we doing without PPEs? What do we have? Don't forget, we have to comply with what we have on staff or what we have in stock, because the fact is, if a child comes without one, you know, like we do that in clothes. If they have an accident, someone always has an extra pair of socks or something. But we need to make sure that we have them too. Thank you.
Can I share what I, I'm going to follow up on Karen with and see if it's, if it's aligned with the, with the committee in, in order to respond to the mayor's comment there?
Please do.
So first, on how did Desi come up with the guidance on pre-K through 1? In terms of what were they relying on? And then also, what type of face covering is acceptable? You know, specifically asking about, you know, so just, you know, a real clear, essentially definition or a list of what's acceptable, what's not acceptable, of those two things on, on masks from Karen Carroll.
Can I ask if one other thing is appropriate for her, Ben?
Sure.
So I don't know if she's a person to ask about sort of younger kids and mask, or if that's a better question for people who are working with younger kids. You know what I mean? I don't know if she's a person to ask medically, no?
Sorry, so just to clarify that, do you mean, um, like, ask her about whether it's appropriate? Or, or I, I would say, you know, if it helps, helps their health, we could ask her questions about specifically that. I'd ask like more how to do it, operational stuff, or how's it going?
From the people who are doing it.
Why? But I think, it sounds like you need both of those, input on both of those.
I mean, CDC, as the mayor said, says from the age of two up. So that's actually in conflict with Desi's, with Desi's policy. So that's sort of, that's a medical question, you know, but it's, it's, there's a little bit of both in it, so.
Yeah, I, I can ask about effectiveness of younger students or whose guidance says what, that's the sort of thing. We can have her opine on that.
Thank you.
And then also, I do have, I'm reaching out to Pathways or other folks who want to, who've been doing this with younger kids and, and helping their experience, what, learning about what their experience has been.
Joel?
Thanks. And to the mayor's point, with not trying to overtax the Health Department or the Board of Health, I suppose an easier question would be just to ask Karen Carroll, you know, where is a reliable, updated, fluid list of an acceptable face covering? Is it CDC? Is it mask.gov? If we can just get that, so we can insert into the policy, your face covering must be on the, this approved list, whatever this list is. And Karen's probably the one to say, I think the list at this website or this government agency is a good one to base your face coverings on. That wouldn't require any extra work on her part or the Board of Health's part. We'd just be able to have a policy that points to this consistently updated list on some regional or governmental site.
Great, thank you.
Well, you know what? I can have her do that and send it out, so we can look, and then you can add, maybe return questions. And then when we have the school committee, be ready to put them in policy. How's that? That's what we have, we have different sites to look at, and this way we can compare. And then we can ask questions of what do you think would be best for our students? And then this way, by next week, we could have a plan.
Good, excellent. So we're going to proceed. Laura?
Well, I just want to say, the other part of the policy that you brought up, Jonathan, I think really clearly that we, we haven't really, we haven't really dealt with here is enforcement. So I don't know where we get information on how best to do that, but that feels like something we need input on as well.
So the policy shouldn't say the how, they should just say the what. So I think the how is going to be left up to the administrative team to figure it out.
Okay.
I mean, you have to remember, they're going to be first graders who are older than some of the second graders, right? And it's, it's good luck, you know?
All right, thanks.
Okay, all right. Are we ready to move on? There's not much left to do. As I indicated in an email this morning, I'm trying to set up a, as far as MSBA goes, we've got a number of, I've got a request from our side as well as from the city's side to coordinate a joint school committee building, city council meeting. The important thing coming up for the school and the new school is that the city council has got to vote to transfer the property to the school department. If that doesn't happen, MSBA will not enter into an agreement with us unless we have possession of the property. So that's the next step. So they would like to get a presentation and meet with us. I sent out some dates this morning. And I think they are not next week, but the week after, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, or the Thursday after that, which would be the 24th, I believe. So I haven't gotten a response from the council president yet, so I'm, I'm not sure where they're, they're headed. Melissa?
When is the vote by the city council? When is that going to happen?
It's.
For the transfer of property?
It is not scheduled yet, as far as I know.
Is there an MSBA deadline for that?
Well, there's an MSBA deadline in that they are not going, they, they approved our project at their last board meeting, but they will not enter into an official contractual agreement with us until we have gotten possession of the, the school department has possession of the property. So I don't.
And when does that typically happen in the process? We've done this before, so is it going to be before the vote in November or after?
It's got to, it's got to be before the vote in November. It's got to be, it should be as soon as possible, because if it doesn't happen, there, you know, even if the vote is positive, it, it doesn't happen, you know, so.
So this is, this is why I ask. So, and Laura and Samantha and I have been having a conversation in the Communications Ad Hoc Subcommittee about getting information out about the school before the vote. And where we got, I don't want to use the word stuck, but where we stopped right now was how do we put information out there on what a no vote means? In other words, if, if the vote in November fails and there's no new school, obviously, there's immediate needs for the school, and we want to get that type of information out. So to me, the purpose of having a meeting with the city council is, is to have that conversation about what happens if this vote fails, what the financial consequences are, what next steps, immediate steps would be to start moving forward to address the issue for the reason that we're asking for a new school. Because we need to get that information out to the public, so that when they go to the vote, when they go to vote in November, they know what yes means and they know what no means. Because like we've discussed, there's this impression out there that if you vote yes, your taxes are going up. But if you vote no, your taxes aren't going up. And I know my conversations with city officials, no does not mean that you're not taxing, your taxes are going up. They're going to go up, because it's going to have to be worked down to the school. So I guess my question to you is, I know you're waiting for a response, but is, can we be clear that when we meet, the conversation is going to be about what happens if this vote doesn't pass? I don't want to just assume that people think it's going to, because we know there's city council members that may not necessarily be in support of this project right now. However, I, I want the ability to question, okay, if you don't support this project, what is your plan on November 3rd or whatever the date is after the vote? And those are the tough conversations that we should be having right now as we go into the vote, because the, the community is owed an explanation of what a no vote means. And we know, no doesn't mean no. No means yes, we have to do this, and it's going to cost this. And that's the conversation we have to have, so that everyone makes an educated vote on, in November. So are we in agreement that we're having a meeting to discuss that, or did you have a different plan? Sorry.
The.
I feel very strongly about this, because I know no doesn't mean.
First thing I have to say is, we as a school committee have to work very carefully on taking positions on the vote. It's, it's illegal. We're not, we are not supposed to be, putting out information is one thing. Advocating for a, a, a yes vote or a no vote is not something that the, the school committee should be doing. As individuals, you can do it. But when we're meeting as a school committee, that's, that's something that we, we're not supposed to be doing.
Jonathan?
Yeah, Kathy, yeah.
Jonathan, I know we have information on this, and I suggest we go over that at next meeting, because I don't think what you just said is completely correct, because we as a school committee voted to support the school. Therefore, our committee as a whole has taken a position to support the school, and I believe the guidance is such. Now, we can't use public resources, we can't mail out through our mail system, we can't, you know, mail letters and, you know, use city funds to mail those letters. But I think we should have that discussion, so we're really clear, because I believe we can do certain things. My second point is, I would like to suggest we take that other last date off the options for the city council meeting, because I think the sooner we have this discussion, the better, because there may be open-ended questions, and I just think we can work through it better. And I don't want to be at the end of September, waiting for them to go through their city council process into October. I, I just know this has been on all of our calendars and, including the city council's calendars. So I think the, the quicker we can have that meeting scheduled and have that discussion, the better for the whole process, the better for more information that gets out to the community, the better the counselors are informed about it, as they can ask their questions or voice their concerns, and we can maybe address them earlier. Just think, waiting yet another week is, is not helpful.
Well.
And Jonathan, you said a presentation. What presentation are we giving to anybody that we haven't given already? So it seems to me, we're not giving a presentation, we're having a conversation of what yes means and what no means. You don't even need to take a position. Just what is going to happen if the vote fails? What is the plan? What is the financial plan?
My point, my point is, we can advocate for the school. We can, we, we can, we can say, this is why we need the school. What we can't do is say, this is why you need to, you know, we can't advocate for the vote, okay? That's, it, it's a fine line, but, but I think it's a real line. We, we, we can't talk about the override and, and say, you got to vote for, you know. We can talk about why the, the, the city council should transfer the property, because we need a new school. But it's just, it's, that's the thing that we, I said, we're just walking a fine line here. We can advocate for the school. We can advocate for why we need a new school. What, what we can't do is enter into the issue about voting for the, for the override. That's the difference. As far as any meeting that I've ever, joint meeting I've ever had with the city council, there's peril at every corner, as we all know that have been here. And I will do my absolute best to get an agenda and get some parameters of, of what we're going to discuss agreed to. But as I've said, there's a lot of wild cards there. You know, we, we, we've been at meetings where we start getting asked questions about dances at O'Malley School, you know? So I'll try to keep it in the ballpark. Samantha?
Just back to Melissa's point. So Ben gave a presentation, I don't even remember now when it was, where he, in a PowerPoint, sort of laid out, like, this is what would happen if the school goes through, and these are sort of the scenarios that would happen if it, if the vote does not go through. Not even the vote, but just if we don't approve a new school. So if we take the board and vote out of it. And I think that what Melissa's saying is that people really do need to understand that there's sort of consequences either way, right? So there's, there's financial implications either way. The school doesn't just remain the same just because we don't approve a new school. There's going to be costs associated with maintaining that building, both of those buildings, all four of those buildings. And I don't think this, the, the community fully understands the costs associated with that. And I, and I, because people don't understand that, and because that information isn't easily accessible, you know, I think we're doing the, the community a disservice, because we're not allowing anybody to make an educated vote. If they decide, sure, I want to spend this much amount of money, and I'm going to vote no, fine, do that. But again, I, there's not enough information to, to appropriately get, get, sorry, let me start over. We have not given the community enough information about what the needs are in those schools and what needs to happen right away to sort of really keep that building open, right? Right now, there's, there's days where it doesn't have heat. Like, there's things that are going to have to happen right away. And what is the cost associated with that? I, I do think that it's important that that information is out there. And I'm not saying that we have to advocate yes or no, but people do need to make an informed, educated decision.
All I was saying is that we can advocate, we can, we can put out all the information that we have, and, and we should be doing that. What we can't do is advocate for the vote, yes and no. That's all I'm saying, that's all I'm saying when I said we're walking a fine line, that we need to do that. We need to keep that in mind as we. Um, we need to keep that in mind as we, as we go down this path, that's all I was saying. So anyways, I will try to do that, I'll try to get it as quick as possible. I think the intention is that, um, we can have Doran Whittier come in and do a presentation on what the, um, what the final submission was, we can get, um, we could get John Dunn to do, some information about, um, what the costs are and what the cost to the city and what the city, the state will be, um, picking up. But they're going to want to talk about our reopening plan too, believe me. They're going to have a million questions about that, so I'll do the best I can to get an agenda that's, that is at least manageable. Samantha.
Just, I mean, I understand that they're going to have questions about the reopening plan, but we've had how many meetings about the reopening plan? Like, if they're curious, they can go back and look.
I, I, I understand that, but how many city councilors besides Val have you seen attend, in attendance?
I don't, but it isn't, that's their choice. So again, like, I think we have to have a boundary there and say, like, we have to respect each other's time and, and say that we need to focus on this next project. Like, I'm, I think it's okay to say, "No, we're not talking about that" because there's plenty of opportunity for them to go back and look at every single video if they want to. I, I mean, I'm sorry that I'm being crass about it, but I just, I, I just don't think it's okay to waste everybody's time if they don't feel like it's appropriate for them to just use their own time or look at the videos if they'd like to.
And as I said, I'll do the best I can. But it's got to be mutually agreeable between us and, and them. Melissa.
I, I can't piggyback enough on what Samantha says. I mean, we only have two months left here and this is a big topic in our community. And while we are all on the same page, pretty much here on the school committee about the needs of our schools, I don't believe that the city council is just because they take care of other things other than school. So we really need to have a good, solid conversation, maybe not vote yes, vote no, but what does it mean if the vote fails? You know, not pushing them in either direction, but we have not had a real conversation with people who are in charge with the city budget of what happens the day after the vote fails and what needs to be done, and that conversation needs to be had soon. And putting it off like Kathy said, isn't going to help us. And throwing it in the middle of an agenda with how we open in schools and Samantha said, "We've been talking about it every single night, if not three times a week." I mean, I don't want to get bogged down and let it take away the importance of the conversation when it really should be focused on what are we doing with our facilities? You know, we're required to give them certain notice if we want capital projects. Well, we better have our capital project list ready if the vote fails for an immediate response and those are the kind of things we should be talking about if, um, when we have our meeting with them.
Okay, I, I'll just get to you in a second, Joel. I just want to respond, what we need to do is frame the conversation not about the override vote. We need to frame the conversation we're having with the city council about the vote to transfer the property. And then we can talk about, you know, what would happen if that didn't happen. We can talk about all those things, but we, I'm just cautioning you that we need to frame it about the, the, their vote. And we can, we can advocate for the new school all night long under those circumstances, okay?
But Jonathan, if you frame it that way, we're not getting to the reason why, all right, so say we have a split city council, say there's five, five that want it and two that join, I don't even know how many members are there, nine. So framing the conversation around transferring the property means they need to know the consequence of not transferring the property.
And that's what I just said, Melissa, that's what I just said. We need to frame the conversation about why they should vote for this, about all the, all the reasons why they should vote for it, that's all I'm saying.
Okay, okay.
Joel, you had something?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to, I, I think the point that you're making is doubly important because the transfer of the property, as I understand it, is a make or break. If this, if, you know, the transfer doesn't happen, then, um, the MSBA's involvement in this deal is, is over, right? Because this, this plan requires this property. And that's even more dire than the situation that Melissa or Sam were talking about, which is this override vote because the reality is, you know, we, we, there's, there's no guarantee, if the override fails, there's no guarantee that there aren't painful other avenues to try and keep this thing sputtering alive, right? But this nice city council vote is a very clean, if it's a no, then everything's over and then the East Gloucester Veterans Buildings have to be maintained until we figure, until we restart the whole process over. The override, for better for worse, has this, you know, a really ugly situation in which it's a no, but we still keep the project alive despite the fact, um, at least long enough to get back out there for another override, right? So I think it's, it's cleaner for that reason also, but we really want to point out the highlights of like, what happens to these, these buildings if they're required to be relied upon for the next, you know, five or 10 years? I think it's easier to frame it in the city council's personal vote of transferring the land.
Kathy?
Um, I know it's getting late, uh, but I just want to say that, you know, when we've had our city council joint meetings, it's really been a grilling of the school committee, not, not a joint, per, joint topic. Um, and I think for this particular meeting, if they have other topics they want to talk about, I think there should be a follow-up meeting, but this particular meeting, I, I think needs to focus on the business that we both share, which is this particular project. Um, and if they want to talk about other school items, then maybe we do that in a month or two when we are not, you know, coming off multiple, multi-hour meetings that we've been having. Um, you know, their curiosity is fine, but I'm sure we're curious about other things too, but we're not going to put it on an agenda if, if it's not immediate when they're dealing with busy things. So hopefully there's some mutual respect in terms of what, what is before us.
I hope so too. Is there any further discussion before we make a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Maria, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Chairman Pope.
Yes.
Ms. Prince.
Yeah.
Mayor Taken.
You people left me speechless tonight, what you said, it's all I'm going to say is, you know what? Absolutely speechless what I'm hearing tonight, what I heard at the last comments, speechless. God bless you when you guys do that joint committee, that's all I can tell you. Yes.
Ms. Watson.
Yeah.
Ms. Wiesen.
Yes.
Kathy Clancy.
Yes.
And Mr. Favaza.
Yes.
It's unanimous, this meeting is adjourned, thank you, uh, to all the people that, uh, tuned in tonight and, um, can say whatever you want about the, the Zoom meetings, but our attendance has been, um, uh, phenomenal. So thank you all for, uh, paying attention to what's going on in the schools and, uh, we'll see you all soon.